Welcome everybody out to the Town Hall Mills 2024 Priorities Dinner. The four main pillars of tonight will be vision, growth, engagement, and facilitation. I'd like to start off with a quote that's on the front page. "The key is not to prioritize your own schedule, but to schedule your priorities." So let's start off, what is a priority? Now pull this straight from Webster's dictionary. "Now, the fact or condition of being regarded or treated as more important." "A thing that is regarded as more important than the other." "The right to take precedence or to proceed before others." What we're doing tonight is a new approach in terms of how the town has done for all these dinners in the past. It's typically held between the Board of Commissioners, the Town Manager, and the Town Clerk. But this year, we proceeded with a new approach to allow the department heads to be directly engaged in the process. What this does is it provides elected officials with the unique opportunity to base their priorities for the year directly rooted in the needs of the departments, assess the framework of key projects and initiatives, and a way to guide the budget process. It allows for the priorities that are set to be tied to services that are provided to the community, and an age in the elected in terms of forming the vision for the town in a way that has never been done before. So now we'll begin with the administration. So what will happen is as we transition to different departments, that department head will come up and speak from the podium, and at the end of that particular department, you'll have an open discussion where we'll allow the elected to discuss specifically what those priorities for that department were. In terms of the manager, the administration consists of the manager, the town clerk, the deputy town clerk, and the three priorities coming from my position as manager are the tax increase, the four-year staggered terms, and the pay study. In terms of the tax increase, with the outlook of the change in the tax structure between the town and the county, on the horizon, there's a need to revisit the subject of a possible tax increase. As the previous board opposed staff's recommendation of a five-cent tax increase for the current fiscal year, the possible 1.9 million-dollar budget shortfall remains unaddressed. As it relates to four-year staggered terms, we've had that conversation before. Our town attorney has proceeded with the paperwork and legislation to allow us to do it, but to date, we haven't actually crossed that threshold. One of the reasons why it's an interesting approach from staff is that it creates a level of continuity because many of the projects that we work on are four-, five-year-, ten-year plans. And so with the current structure of every two years, the four-year staggered terms provide, like I said, an opportunity to have a little bit more continuity. But that's just something that I feel is something that we can establish. In terms of the pay study, we're currently in the middle of that. We continue to work with David, who is the, uh, working with the company that's providing the pay study, myself, our HR director, finance director, elected, and police chief are constantly meeting with him regularly. So we're in the middle of that. That is probably one of the highest priorities that the board currently has. And now I turn it over to our town clerk, who will speak more about priorities from the administration.
Can you hear me? Yes. So, good evening. I'm Ashley Wyatt, the town clerk, and the administration consists of myself, Deputy Clerk, uh, Cora De Reagan, and obviously our interim town manager, Chancellor McLaughlin. And what we are proposing tonight is to incorporate an administrative assistant in the administrative department. Next slide, please. So we wanted to start with optimizing operations in relation to Town Hall Administration. Department below are the top three priorities that we've come up with, and that would be the administrative assistant, increased training and travel budget, and increased remote work availability. So what we did here was break down how these things would optimize operations. We have, with the administrative assistant, they would assist with bringing our file room into compliance, such as with our records disposition, microfilming, and overall inventory and maintenance of the files. Next, we have an increased training and travel budget, which would allow to keep us abreast of best practices and programs that assist with running the municipality effectively. And our third is remote work and more availability and flexibility to do that, and that allows for a reduced commute and increased work-life balance. Next slide. So the cost associated with the administration priorities would be an administrative assistant. This is the current salary, which is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars. The increased training and travel budget was previously seven thousand dollars for the fiscal year, and we are requesting to raise it to ten thousand, which would just be an increase of three thousand dollars. And then the increased remote work availability would cost nothing. And, oh, any questions?
Any comments from the board members? It's for the body.
Can you hear me? Yes.
All right. How much has, well, I know you went to Atlanta with us. Is that, what else? Has anyone else used that budget? Is that the only thing we're including is? Are you guys?
No, I think, um, that did come out. Did that come out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
His came out. The four people that, or the three people that shared on this, Ashley, Cora, and Chancellor, all come out of the admin budget. Some of Chancellor's can still come out of the planning budget at this point. Y'all's amount comes out of government body, which is completely separate budget.
So what she's talking about in terms of, uh, increased training budget is like Mrs. Coranda's currently pursuing the town clerk training, things of that nature. So, and they've identified some, um, identified some needs that will allow the administration to be, um, to, the educational pieces to be enhanced a little bit, but from the overall standpoint, it's really only about a $2,000 request in terms of the increase. And so what you'll see about some of these discussion items, I don't know if they will become priorities for the board. They may just be some things that we could handle that question, but there may be some of these things that are important to the department.
Thank you.
A couple of comments I want to make before we go further with the slideshow is that I wanted to share with not only the staff, but the board in this room, over the next five months, all of us in this room are going to be working toward a budget that's going to work for our town and so work for the citizen and the services that we deliver. And tonight's kickoff is something that, like Chancellor said, we're doing something very early that's never been done before. We're going to get after this early to see exactly what the needs of the department are. We'll ask questions tonight about what the needs of all of your departments are. And then we'll come back in February with a meeting about what the board's priorities are. And that'll be that first board meeting in February. And then from there, we'll go into the retreat, which will be in this room, March 7th, and we'll put, merge both of them together and see what we can find and what, a true list of what these priorities will work on. But to get to March, we've got to go through tonight and February. But what I want everyone to know is that we're going to do this together. This is our budget. It's not a board of commissioners' budget. It's our budget. There's some things we're going to be able to do, there's some things we're not. We're going to have to make some hard and tough decisions because if you notice on that first slide, we're looking at a 1.9 sales tax revenue loss coming our way. And that is a big amount that we've got to manage now going forward, somewhere in this budget. And still deliver all the services that we deliver everybody for the citizens and still deliver services to all the areas that planning just don't want us to annex this year. That's a tough rub. It is. That is a tough rub. That's why it's instrumental for every one of you in this room to be part of this budget in any way, shape, or form. This board will listen to everything that you guys say. We'll have some tough decisions, and we're going to have some hard conversations. I will tell you that now. And it's going forward over the next five months, but by God, we'll do it together, okay? Everybody in?
Yes, sir.
All right.
As we all know, a budget is just an estimate. But as we go through the year, we want to stay as close to that estimate as possible. Drew and his staff have done a good job of preparing this budget along with the other staff. And our job just to approve this budget. But you guys are the ones who are doing the budget. We're just approving the budget. Thank you.
There's no further discussions. Thanks, we have the Human Resources Department.
You guys can hear me okay? So basically, for the Human Resources Department, our, the priority is going to be digitating everything. Right now, we have mainly everything that we do is by paper and pencil and that. And so I think it's going to be super important to take all of the processes that we do and make them in a digital format. And I think we have the capabilities. We have, currently, we have Tyler, which is our ERP system, and it has a human resources module in there, and we have a lot of capability with that in terms of like when we hire somebody, that particular system, we can make everything, e-forms, electronics. So the person that we hire is doing everything online, and it hits our, um, uh, Human Resources Information System, which is Tyler. And it will also, at that time, make a personnel file. So then everything is completely paperless, and that is going to really free up a lot of, uh, time and work. There's going to be some initial costs with all of that. Right now, we have NeoGov, which is our recruiting system, our applicant tracking, um, system. And it doesn't, it doesn't merge with Tyler because it needs an API in there. So basically, we have a benefits platform, we have a recruiting platform, an applicant tracking form, and then we have our, our HR RS system, which none of them are working together right now. So it's very inefficient. And so if we can find a way to, you know, come up with initial costs, which I'm really kind of calculating at maybe about forty-five thousand. I know that sounds like a lot, but in the end, and as we move forward, that is going to reduce staffing, it's going to, it's going to reduce a lot of stuff. So there's initial costs, to be sure. But right now, everything is everywhere, and we have a very difficult time finding things or just recruiting things. And we're in a very, like, you know, tech, technology kind of era, right? We have Gen Z's, we have all of our upcoming generations are all technologically advanced. So we need to keep up with that if we're going to recruit, we're going to retain people. And part of the, you know, digitizing everything, part of Tyler, there is even an employee portal so that employee, our employees could actually go in there, make changes if they want to update their, um, addresses, if they want to look at their pay stuff. It even has the capability to show an employee that here's your, your base salary. But if we add benefits, if we add comp, if we add everything to it, here's your overall compensation package, which really, when you put it on a piece of paper and you look at it, you go, oh, this is really awesome, right? I'm getting paid this amount of money, but benefits is amazing here, especially in our town, and that adds to everything. And so when an employee can have that capability to go in there and see that, it reduces even, you know, coming to the HR department, walking through all of that kind of stuff. So it's super, super important. I have some other priorities that, um, you know, would be super important to you, which would be adding another, um, person. So we have a, our, our staff is two, but we probably need another one because HR staff, um, we take care of risk management too. And if we can digitize that, then we have all of our staff when we have a worker's comp issue, when we have a vehicle claim. They go online, they, you know, do everything online, it hits my office, everything is signed digitally, and it would just make us a whole lot more efficient. That's my, that, those are my priorities.
Comments from the board? Move the mic up and down.
Now, yeah. Now, is this the best program that you found that does what you need to happen? Like, have you researched any other programs?
Okay, so for, we have Tyler, and that's our financial system, and it's also the Human Resources Information System because we do have that module. It would be not cost-effective to, to, to look at any other system, right? Because it's, we're in a public sector, and it's amazing.
We're open.
Yeah, it's amazing. And so if we can find the way, I talked to Drew, and I know that we pay X amount of dollars for what we have currently, but there are things that we can add and turn on that just make us incredibly more efficient. And so, you know, when you're freeing all of us up, um, in that manner, then we are able to, you know, kind of change course and just go someplace else and, and do some other things that, you know, really benefit our employees. So I think, to answer your question, yes, it's the best system that we have now if we can get everything integrated. Tyler is a proprietary, um, kind of platform. So to integrate like our, we have Employee Navigator as our benefits. To integrate that, we'll probably be some, you know, kind of pulling out our hair and stuff like that because Tyler doesn't like to do that. But on the other side, Tyler has a benefits platform, too.
So it's essentially an upgrade versus starting from scratch?
Right. Yeah, we don't want to start from scratch. That'd be like, no. Yeah.
You know, we, we've already invested a lot into the software, so it has some modules and different additions that you can add to it. But every time you do that, there's a new cost.
And, and really, our files, like when we hire somebody, you know, there's so many things that are different right in the public sector. We have to keep so many, um, pieces of paper and everything on an employee. And, you know, even the training and everything kind of adds up over the years. But when we take it and we put it into Tyler, and they come on board and everything's, you know, just at a click, it just populates, and there you have the file. And on top of all of that, when it comes to compliance and making sure that we have that secured, if there was a fire, we'd have it all in the cloud, it would be amazing.
Anybody else? Next, we have someone at the bottom.
Nobody told me to wear my tall shoes, so y'all can look at my forehead while I do this. You can go ahead. Okay, so, um, the stormwater department, actually, um, in the previous fiscal year, we increased some of our stormwater fees to catch up with some of our surrounding towns and to make sure that we had a level of funding that would allow us to operate and do some things internally that we wanted to do. So we actually don't need any extra funding. What we're looking at is a more stringent cleaning routine. We've been doing it for about three or four years now, and we have seen during flash flooding events where the cleaning has really come in handy. We had a lot of storm drain pipes that are small, older pipes, y'all know this. They get backed up easily. So we have everything on a cleaning rotation, and we found that a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars, which is what we used some state funding for last year to do a round of cleaning, we were able to get a good majority of the town and the areas that we see problems done in, in a one year, which it usually, they only were working for us for about six months, um, to do that, that cycle. So we're asking to keep that funding level where it is for this coming year, just to be able to keep up with what we have now. The other thing that we are looking at doing is we have noticed in our cleaning routine that we have a lot of right-of-way easements that are overgrown. So what happens is, whether it be a wooded area or somebody's yard, people will come in and plant things. One of the things that we did in our upgrades to our ordinance was we no longer allow fences or plantings on the easement because that gets in the way if we have some kind of catastrophic failure or we need to do maintenance. We're tearing up people's things that are on the easement. So, um, we made that change, but now we need to go through and do some maintenance to those areas. The drains that are on your street, there's an end of a pipe somewhere. And a lot of times, the end of the pipe is in a wood line. There's trees, shrubbery, bushes, things like that. We need to have access to be able to visually see those and be able to inspect them from both ends, from the street and from the end of the pipe. That is also something that we're looking at doing in-house. It will be done when we do inspections, we'll identify an area. If it's something that we can do with chainsaws and the equipment that we have, we will. There might be some requests for contract work if it's something outside the norm. We haven't seen anything that will require contract work yet. But we're still making a priority list of what needs to be done, when, and, and where. The last thing, and some of you have not heard my shameless plug for our Public Works Maintenance Staff and sometimes our Parks and Rec Maintenance Staff as well, but we have a lot of folks that do a lot of hard work during the day. And my department has the capability to help out with equipment and supplies and things that we use frequently. So we intend to continue helping those departments maintain in streets. You all know the storm drainage infrastructure is underneath the streets. So if something with my system goes wrong, it has the potential to tear up things that other departments are doing. And I'll use Lamarcos as an example, but a lot of times, we have Parks and Rec projects that come up and... Wow. You're welcome. So if we have a project and we have project funding, whether it be board-approved through the normal process or whether it be grant funding, um, that's usually to get the project completed. That doesn't make it pretty because the infrastructure money is what gets eaten up very quickly when you have to do piping and things like that. We would like to continue to have the ability to help with those projects, to do the infrastructure within our fiscal budget so that when they get done with their projects, we can make it look pretty, too. When we get done with a project, we need shade trees, we need landscape, and we need things like that. A lot of times, we run out of money. So if we can help with some of the front-end infrastructure costs, then that allows them to use grant funding or the money that you all have allotted for the project to actually have a turnkey project and a finished project and not have to wait till the next fiscal cycle. And that is all I have for you guys. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Are we having any problems? With getting permission to go on any of these properties? That any of these drains might be on?
We only have one issue with one drain. Not going to bring that up in here, but the answer to your question is, no, we typically do not. We get with the property owner before we do any access. If we can't get to it without, you know, if we have to go through a yard, we obviously have to have permission from that property owner unless it were an emergency-type situation. But we cleaned some right-of-way over off LeBoni area, and we had absolutely no issue. Went in, told them what we were planning on doing, um, how long it would take, and what the finished product would look like. And typically, people are happy to have those overgrown areas cleaned up, especially if there's an easement, you know, if it's easement between a yard or behind a yard, it's likely stuff that's growing into that they're having to maintain on their property. So I think it would be beneficial to any resident that has areas that need to be cleaned, you know. They, they don't mind us coming and doing that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Don't get uncomfortable, everyone, you're all going to be having questions. Okay, so when you're, for your, um, make sure I'm understanding. Now, you want to have a minimum of a hundred thousand. You said, like, this last fiscal year, a lot of it came from grant money that you had on the house?
So we used some state funding for this last cycle. We have typically in the past budgeted for about fifty thousand, and we found that that doesn't allow us to clean all of what needs to be cleaned annually. At the hundred thousand dollar level, we are able to clean a good majority. But that number is going to come once I sit down with Drew and we determine how much we can, and then it will come back before you. You'll get to see it again.
Gotcha. Okay.
And just so you know, the stormwater fund is separate from the general fund of the town. The fees that she collects are designated just for stormwater expenses. So, um, as you see, the budget normally when it's presented, you have the general fund, power bills, a separate fund, and stormwater is a separate fund as well.
Do you do all the cleaning in-house or do you contract that?
No, ma'am, the cleaning is contracted out. The, we, the town does not have the equipment to do the cleaning in-house. We have an old jetter, I don't even know if it's still running, but it, it's just not sufficient. So we typically will go out, get three quotes. We have, the, the guy that we've been using for the last couple of years has come in, the lowest bid. They keep track of their hours, they keep track of the lines that they clean, and they allow us to come in and camera before and then camera the line afterwards. They have the ability to do cammering, but we don't include that because we have a pole hammer so we can see a little bit down the pipe. But it gives us a good perspective of what it was before and then what it looks like afterwards. I mean, um, just sediment in the pipe will clog the pipe. It, you know, three-quarters of the pipe will be full, so there's only that small portion in the top that actually allows water to flow through. I will get some pictures. You probably haven't seen any of that, but we have some good before and after pictures that I can share with you to show you the, what the difference is. It's, it's pretty cool. Just in this last cycle, we claimed there was a pine tree root that had grown into the pipe and small opening, and they have, there's, it's typically water that's run, it's high-pressured water, and they run it down the pipe, and then they pull all the dirt back, and it's vacuumed up in a big vacuum truck. They have a cutting head as well, and that goes in, it's high-pressure and chains, and it will cut if there's a root stuck inside the pipe. They pulled out, it was like this big around and like that long in a twenty-four-inch pipe. I believe Tyler has it still in his office. It smells like, um, like sap, so. But it, it really does help when, like I said, when we have flash flooding events, you get a lot of rainwater coming down quickly. We do still have some areas that, you know, the pipes are small in size, so the water gets down there and it takes a while for it to get out. But we're not having water standing around for two or four days. It's usually within twenty-four hours, and it's, it's completely drained out.
It's a lot more expensive than we were about on equipment, but I understand that it's like over a million dollars for one truck or something.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the truck itself, and then it has to be outfitted with the equipment, which is costly in itself. And then the maintenance of that vehicle is also extremely costly. So we prefer to go the contracting route because there are companies that do that and they have multiple trucks. So we, like, for us, if we were to purchase one, then we... then we'd be responsible for maintaining it. And if it's down, we don't have the ability to clean. If their truck goes down, they just bring us another truck. Yes, sir.
What's in the current budget for cleaning?
So, in this previous year's budget for cleaning, we had a hundred thousand, and that was funded through the state funding. In prior years, we have only put fifty in there just because we're trying to build up the, the emergency fund, if you will, just in case. Drew and I had a conversation two or three years ago about making sure we had enough money if we were to have some type of epic failure. And we didn't have an option other than to just call in a contractor and fix it, you know, hurricane event or something like that. We would need that funding available. So, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're getting close to getting to the level that Drew and I are comfortable with having there. But, with the increased fees for this coming year, we should be able to do some more. And then we will start looking at some project-type things moving forward.
We will. So, you're saying you're going to expand the entire hundred thousand?
Yes, yes, sir.
And perhaps going forward, we may need additional money to put to that project?
We could. The company that we have been using also has the capability, like I said, to camera, but they also, or the company that can do cast-and-place liners. So, if we were to have a pipe failure, like where the pipes meet at the joint, our, our only option before was to actually dig up the roadway or the yard. And you've got to dig twice as deep and twice as wide to be able to get in there and actually do the work to repair it. With the liner option, they go in from the box, they slide. The liners are made for whatever the, the length is that's needed, and they put it in from the box. There's no digging required. So, we have used them, actually, the line for this building, it was, it shifted during the construction. So, the company that went with the liner option rather than dig up the back parking lot, and it was a lot less costly.
But, you're not requesting any vehicles or equipment or personnel?
No, sir. I have heard that we may be requesting a truck that will be used for public works staff. Most everybody knows we are... So, we manage the administrative part of the stormwater permit. And then Public Works is tasked with a lot of the cleanup and, and labor work that is done if we need to do something in-house. So, what we do is purchase equipment that is shared between the departments. They have a place to store it, and they also have a need to use that equipment for other things other than stormwater. But, it's a justifiable purchase. So, we may be requesting a leaf truck because we definitely don't want folks' leaves in the drains that we just cleaned.
So, that may be Dawn requesting?
It will, it will come, it will come through, through Dawn's budget, but yes.
Okay. We'll get to them, we'll get to them.
Yeah, Dawn requested in his budget, and then Chancellor and I meet with each department. If we see that it can't be funded by the general fund or something like that, and it's something that stormwater can cover, then we say, okay, we're going to fund that with stormwater. We take that, his request, and we put it in that. If that brings up, they don't fund much.
And he may even let us do some advertising on the side of his leaf truck. I don't know, I haven't asked yet.
Last question, Ben.
Yes, sir.
What grants are we pursuing?
Well, we just talked to the grant lady this morning, so I'm not sure what grants we're pursuing yet. But, we told her our needs, and we are waiting on our master plan to be completed. When we sent it to them, the 2011 total was twenty-two million in projects. I'm going to assume, just with the cost of things, that we're at a minimum of forty-four million now, which we have completed. There's about eight projects that we've completed. And there are some that were on that initial list that we have never, ever seen an issue in the area that was, there was a supposed issue. So, we have removed those, and we have added a few areas that we know are, you know, issues that need to be addressed. So, we should have that back in the next couple of months.
Would you agree that the grant lady is going to be a huge opportunity for not only your department, but every department sitting in this room tonight?
I do, I do believe that the grant lady gave us a lot of hope this morning. It was a very positive conversation, and I think everybody in the room was glad to have it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Not, not from Ms. Brown, but I, I was on the call this morning, and I took some good notes. Department head had a lot of ideas, and I wish I had known before we got on the call. She pretty much just told us to give them, give her a bill of wishes. And so, there were some other things that department mentioned today that I didn't know today either. So, I think that maybe, I don't, I don't think all of them are added in this package either. But, there was some pretty interesting things that they requested. And I thought, well, he's there for the town. But, she, I think it was a very, very positive call. I'm sure she said she was going to try to get us something by the end of today, but I didn't see, and listen, I don't, I didn't see anything come to me that I thought she said she was going to try to get us something.
She didn't, she didn't give it to us yet for what she, she's doing second to that robust list. I mean, we talked about everything from, Kenny talked about body cams for inspections to upgrades for the entire overhaul of the AVI system in the town hall. I mean, we pretty much did everything for her. And she is going to put together a list of things that she can pursue to come back to us. So, we sent it to you later that she did ask us to come back. And so, that'll allow us to now give that to you guys. We're not going to incorporate that in there. The idea behind that is if we can pursue very, very powerful things through the grant funding program, that lesson, that amount of money that comes to the general fund. And Drew and I were talking today, he said, well, we can put the thirty thousand out of general fund. And I said, Drew, it's free. We don't have to pay for any of this. It's, it's so, that was powerful about it, that we don't have to spend money to do this. We just have to give them ideas. And so, we will talk about more, I guess, these department. Or if it's something that we did talk about, you might want to just add that to the discussion as you go. Thanks, we have the planning department.
I'm actually going to be covering both code enforcement and planning. So, for our code enforcement department, we originally had spoken about adding a third code enforcement officer. But, in further conversations, we actually decided we wanted to do more of a hybrid, like a zoning code enforcement officer. Due to us, we're in the process of updating our zoning and subdivision ordinance, which is going to include being more stringent on our landscape plan requirements. So, at the moment, our two code enforcement officers are overwhelmed with focusing mostly on residential properties, not so much on the commercial. So, if we bring in a third zoning code enforcement officer, they can focus more on the commercial properties and also supplement in helping with the residential as well. The other thing is we would like to add two new vehicles along with that new officer. This past year, we were able to add one new vehicle, but it still leaves our officer driving my old vehicle from, I think, 2009. So, that would also provide the, any other equipment that they might need, cameras, et cetera. And then, on top of that, help increase the training budget. I, I admit, I don't know what the actual budget for training is at the moment. But, for code enforcement officers, part of the requirements is they have to get their building one certification, which calls for going to classes and taking tests, and then also continuing education. Is it not working? Sorry, I'm getting over sinus stuff. My voice is not very dependable right now.
Give us just a second, and we'll turn that volume up. Okay, try that.
Hello, better? Sweet. But, we're also looking to hopefully increase the training budget because right now, we have, for the longest time, I was the only code enforcement officer for well over ten years. Now, we have two code enforcement officers. They are both in the process of working toward getting their building one certification. Like I said, that includes taking several classes, staying overnight because those classes take, they're most of the time scheduled over several weekends. And then they have continuing education requirements. And then, we also have a new certification. I just received it in November, Certified Zoning Official. That class is very important to have for understanding the zoning requirements that we use here in Hope Mills. And then for the planning and zoning, we are looking to try to hopefully have a fully staffed planning department. Right now, it's a staff of one and a half because I harass Chancellor all the time. And then also, we're looking to possibly separate off and recreate our own planning board away from Cumberland County. Understandably, that's probably something in the far future. That would take several steps. But, for the most part, we do the vast majority of the work for the planning board. I do all of the reports that have to be submitted for the agenda. And more or less, they just put it on the consent agenda if there's no issue with it. And then if there's a presentation that's required, then I have to create the presentation and do the presentation during the planning board meeting. And also, we have been in talks and discussions about possibly taking over GIS for Hope Mills. And that would require us to possibly add another person, possibly cross-train someone. We, we've actually spoken with someone in the police department that is in the process of getting a degree in GIS. So, it might be something hopefully as simple as cross-train someone that can part-time come over to our office and then the rest of the time, do what she needs to do over here. But, that's more or less what we're looking for, for both code enforcement and planning. If you have any questions, I'm ready for you.
Questions, Board?
I really liked the GIS mapping. When we went to Atlanta, while they were both in some, one of the meetings, I was talking with the guy from GIS, and that is a really great program because it's not just for zoning and stuff like that. It's just the way it gives demographic information, all, all sorts of information that it, it's a very useful tool. And I don't remember off the top of your head how much that cost. I'm sure it's a...
And that's part of the reason why it would probably be in the near future, far future, because it would also include us having to get accounts with them and then having to connect. As I understand, it can, it should be able to connect with the county because it would be the same program. But, at the same time, we would be doing any changes on our end over here versus waiting for them, so...
And I'm talking to the major, it's, it's the cost of not only getting the system, like the stormwater at the system, but we can integrate the cost of the system and primarily the cost of the bandwidth and the file size to be able to run the system from server standpoint. So, it's very, very robust. It's very important to us because as we rezone properties, as we annex properties, we have to allow the county to update the zoning maps. And so, it's working pretty well to county. But, when we broke off from the county and assumed about ninety percent of their duties on our own, the two things that remain is GIS mapping and planning board. And so, that's something that we're talking about. It's really just a cost aspect in having cross-training for somebody to GIS version to figure out to make the change. Right offhand?
I mean, the way I think of like HR's program, I was expecting, you know, five, five figures, six figures.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's up there. But, it is something that we could possibly pursue through some grant funding. And that's a one-time fee. So, that's not something that would actually be an annual amount. It's just, once we get, we get that amount, it's just a new system.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. Is this a grant opportunity for the grant lady?
I will say too, some additional initiatives that we talked to the grant department about from a planning standpoint. We did talk to them about the Main Street program, funding that with the NC Commerce, as well as when we did a bike and pedestrian plan last year, it actually recommended a greenway. And not just like the greenway that at the golf course or the track that's at the hall. This would be a greenway that connects the golf course to town hall. And so, that was one of the recommendations of the study. And so, what happens with this lady we're dealing with, any program or any data that we already have in studies, even with transportation, we talked about that, we have the multi-modal adjusted lawn plan. So, when we have plans already, that's almost justifying and helping to pursue grants because we have data with plans that we've already completed. And so, that was something that's very powerful that came out of it. But, we did speak about a greenway and the Main Street program with the planning department.
Emily?
Yes.
I know you mentioned you needed another code enforcement officer.
Yes.
So, are you looking at dedicating one officer just for commercial? And the other two residential?
So, what we're, what we're kind of thinking right now is the, the new officer's main focus would be policing and maintaining commercial properties, but then they would supplement their time and help with the residential. So, they would still support the two that are in existence now. At the moment, we have several businesses throughout the town that have a land, you know, all of them have a landscape plan one way or the other, but they're not necessarily maintaining them. So, we have several businesses that maybe they're required to have seven medium-sized trees out front, and say, three of them died off and they've not replaced them yet. So, we would like to have somebody in place to start enforcing, hey, you need to replace these trees, you need to maintain these plants that you're supposed to because that is a part of the agreement for you to have your commercial business in the town of Hope Mills.
So, these are ordinance values?
In essence, yes. And we're, we're trying to strengthen that.
Anybody else? Okay, Jim. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Thanks, we have the inspections department.
Let me just test this microphone first, I'll blow you out. Can you hear me all right? That's your live, okay. My name is Kenny. I'm the Chief Building and Fishing Director, Permanent Inspectors Department. Mine's pretty simple. My three parties this year, the inspections and permanent department is performing in effective, efficient, productive manner. And I would like to invest the resources afforded by the town back into the valuable and dedicated staff at this department. Our most valuable asset is our people. So, my presentation, three counts will be pretty simple. Short, my three priorities, staff retention, professional development, and budget support to achieve those goals. I would like to say on behalf of my department that I'm in, there's a total of six of us. There's two permits techs and four inspectors, three inspectors and myself, the CBO. But, we're, we're a very specialized department. And one of them that is, is we're so specialized, I'm constantly fighting outside entities trying to poach my people because we just don't have a lot of inspectors in North Carolina. We don't have a lot of good permit techs in North Carolina because that position is so specialized. And I'm constantly pushing off other municipalities trying to poach my inspectors because I get them in, train them up, get them certified, and people start looking for, you know, other than the department. But, my permit technicians are pulling double duty. As y'all may know, they, they're set up front, and they handle all the processes of permits, which include receiving the applications, going over the applications, processing them, issuing the document, collecting the physicals from this, and making sure that, you know, they're doing all this stuff under general... and making sure that, you know, they're doing all this stuff under general statutes of North Carolina. But on the other side of that, they field all the calls for town hall and greet all the guests up front. They're pulling double duty. And so I just want to get in there and so far staff retention goes, I want to get in there and make sure they're being paid appropriately for doing what they do and professional development. Constantly get my inspectors to take their training classes and con ed and like Emily says, all their levels because what we have to take are state mandated courses. We don't have an option. To keep our certifications, we have to take these courses to do inspections for the municipality. So I just need the budget for that. We had a, we had an eight thousand dollar budget this year for training and travel. And I'm probably going to use a penny of it because as you accumulate more inspectors, you got to have more, naturally more training and travel. So right now, I'm not looking for new positions. I'm not looking for any new trucks or anything like that. We've been fortunate.
That was my question.
We've been fortunate. We, I got one old truck. Ray drives it. He won't let go of it. But as I mentioned, Ray, he's my other, one of my other senior inspectors. He's probably going to be retiring this coming up year, so I will have to fill that position. But I look at that toward fall, winter time, coming down the road. I want to give y'all just a quick snapshot of, because we always hear about planning and zoning and all this stuff, but we don't realize what the value it adds to our municipality. So I'll give you an example. In the calendar year, January through December of 2022, we wrote eighteen hundred forty-one permits with a value add to municipality of sixty-four, sixty-four million, five hundred twenty-four thousand dollars value added municipality. We collected close to six hundred thousand dollars of fees and did twenty-five hundred inspections. Just past year, in 2023, and the reason I say this because my department, we got policies and procedures that we enacted and it's running our highest and best use for our time. Because we're a small department and we're busy, we're doing as much as the city fed with us. They got nineteen inspectors, I got four. But in 2023, for example, calendar year, we issued twenty-two hundred and forty-two permits, which is a significant increase, and we did write it ninety-nine million dollars in value add in municipality. And we collected almost nine hundred thousand dollars of fees and we did thirty-seven hundred inspections. So we're, 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 we're grown as a town, you know? The planning brings the people in and the police department, because we follow our public safety and we're kind of the third rocket on public safety because everybody talks about firing police, which they should. But we just, long story short, it is, we just need the staff. We need to, we need to retain who we have and recruit who we can. But if we got good folks, we need to keep them. And any way we can do that, we need to try to do that within reason.
Fair enough, Kenny. Any questions?
I do have a question. Why do, how are other people in the detention department, why do they answer the phone and keep it going? Like, is there a legal law?
I've been trying, well, my, for the last couple of years, I've been wanting to take those responsibilities away from my department and have the town hire receptionists and put up their front. But we, it's just budgetary shrinks. It's just one of the things. And this, this is my third municipality in my last that I've worked for. I've never had permit techs and inspectors answering the phones for the municipality because we're busy enough on all the jobs.
And I'm on that too, I think Kenny, what Kenny said is key. There is this office secretary or work that just kind of has their phone calls, people coming in. And a lot of times you don't realize what Von is going to do. Everybody can't do that. If you put me up there one time, if someone called in an inspection, they're like, they're talking in another language. And so it's a lot of specialized things that do specifically for inspections. But from a staffing or budgetary standpoint, the real question has been, do we have the ability to hire two receptionists just to do that? But what's going to happen when you get the Don's pieces? We're going to have a bigger thing we need to address in terms of the size of town hall and how many available offices you have. Because if you were to get two receptionists, where would you put Von and Whitney in town hall? We've actually talked about the mob of the trailer you see back there and things that nature behind the building. And I think they ran lines for when we built the public safety building. But in Don's presentation, we have had discussions about expanding town hall from a staffing level. We're talking about adding a third code enforcement officer, a second planner, and things of that nature. I think right now we might have one, maybe two available offices and a need for about six or seven. And so while we're having those conversations, what you'll see is for years, everybody in this room has been doing work by committee, which is why the grant program is so heavy because when the lady asks us, who's running the grants? God bless. And so the ability to have someone to do that, we were talking about the grants position. We found out about this particular agency. So it's been some conversations about bringing people on to staff to do that. But primarily it's been a budget situation on, do we have the amount of money to fund the position? And somewhere will we put that position in terms of the office in town hall?
And I realize it gets frustrating because we've all called town hall and thinking about answering the phone. And that's because my two permit techs are so wrapped up and tied in trying to issue permits, schedule inspections. They just have an array of what they got to do. And that job is so specialized that if they don't got the right eye across the rock, he, he can mess a lot of stuff up. We can break a lot of general statutes, state laws. We can make a contractor pay for thousands of dollars that he wasn't supposed to pay for. So it's a very, it's very specialized. And it needs to stay focused on that. And they've done a great job doing it, you know? But that's why I say it's a little different. I'm not, maybe I shouldn't say it, but I'm going to say it. That's why you got three or four inspectors and not knocking other departments, but you might have twenty, thirty, forty police officers or twenty, thirty, forty five. You know, it's just being here at Hope Mills, we multitrade. We got to have four trades. And a lot of departments don't do that. There are only one trade. So it takes a special person to be here anyway to obtain all those certifications and maintain them and be good at it. And that's all I have.
So, and I'm done directly.
Yes, ma'am.
But I know there might be some other ones. But so some of the, the answering the phones and some of the, I know we talked about administrative position at the end of the presentation, couldn't some of that work be done remotely? They don't have to worry about, at least that's one space you wouldn't have to worry about. But it just sounds to me overall, and I think I did this last year, I completely said that throughout this year. It sounds like a lot of our budget needs to go to even more people because this town has continued to grow. But I think our staff levels are the same. It's going to be very expensive. It's going to hurt us financially, but we cannot continue to grow at the rate that we are growing and keep the staff levels at five that we have. And we know there's more growth that is continuing to come. And we talked about that. It's one of the other problems that is, we don't have enough space and we know that we do not have enough space. So, but I, I think, I just think overall, a lot of this is a manpower issue. And we probably need more of us as a town if we probably have manpower that we really need to operate the town.
I just have a few questions and it's probably for the manager of the group. But going back to even code enforcement, so and, and, and the planning, I know we, I know we brought you sometime back to start taking the planning department back over. I'm curious about how much we still paying the Cumberland County for their services? I got a whole list of questions.
Forty-six thousand, I think, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. Typically, and I had this conversation with the county. I was under the impression when we broke off that we would just be eliminated for paying that. One thing that they actually ousted charges us that went forward is the administering of the long-range planning, which is the software plan. And so that's a key piece that's going to be a little bit more difficult to break off from. But I do know, back to the budgetary things in terms of staffing levels, I do know that remote working has been something that has become a little bit more attractive in terms of an alternative for having a position. Now, some positions just don't bother them for that. If you're talking about code enforcement, we had a request for three code enforcement officers in the budget. This fiscal year, we cut it out, we had to run. There was a moment where we realized that the two trucks that we had with code enforcement had a combined technical value of twelve hundred dollars, both trucks. So we had requested three new trucks with the two, with additional position. We cut two trucks from the budget, purchased one. So our second code enforcement officer is driving the truck that the senior officer had, I think the truck's twenty years old. And so if we're talking about the massive amount of growth we're doing, especially from a commercial standpoint, and we want to actually change the landscaping plan to make sure that these much developments are more heavily developed, we're going to need a dedicated person for that. If you're talking about the number of inspectors you have at the county or at the city of Fayetteville, I think Fayetteville has fifteen code enforcement officers. We're currently operating on two. I think about two years ago, I requested four so that we can, we create a quadrant-like step where one particular officer is assigned to one quarter of the town. And so that's the idea of growing it to four. Right now, they're working as hard as they can with two. And we do cross-promoting. Now Emily came to the planning department from code enforcement. And so we do certain things like we put in the budget for the purchase of all the materials to actually get to level one, then level two. So if you're a code enforcement officer, you have an avenue to possibly grow into the inspection department or the planning department. So we do a lot of cross-promoting, but from a staffing level, it's getting to the point where like what Mayor Wachemacrae said, with the amount of growth we're doing, we're going to have to have that. It's hitting every level. It's not just police and fire. You have a need for more inspectors, a need for more code enforcement officers, a need for more planners, a need for more staff in general to handle these things. And we're trying to do it in the most efficient way possible.
Some of this, it's part of like inspections, the plan is on and they're your managers. They're bringing in the dollars for you and they're, no, no deal, get split the fire. But they're, they're not ready for this. So I see where that is. So we're still paying the county for their services. So collection rates, Kenny touched on collection rates. So where are we at percentage-wise on collection, with some collecting? Is that a hundred percent of that fee collection?
Plan and white?
The fee collection for inspections?
Oh, for
For, for code enforcement, fire inspection, building inspection?
Yeah, we
I know their department gets serious, but for the fire department, it's statement that they go out and do inspection, they issue fees for that service. What's their collection rate? Because I know they're not getting a hundred percent collection, can't be. You know, maybe we need to look at a collection agency, collection service. You go after some of these, these fines or fees, we talk about code enforcement going out, put pressure on, you know, homeowners and businesses that they issue fines, they issue citations. Are they getting paid? That's, that's revenue that we could be losing out on if we could be bringing in to help support these parks to improve.
That's a very good point. We had that conversation extensively a couple of years ago where in code enforcement, the only teeth we really have is to help us to put a lien on the property. And what happens is it doesn't really have teeth because if you are a landlord that lives in Jersey, we've been cutting your grass and we contracted out, that lien means absolutely nothing until you sell your property. So we did have a conversation about a way of approaching it by doing a collection agency. I think there was hurdles in doing that, but we did have that conversation. We can revisit that because that's a more aggressive approach.
I would like, I think we need to take a more aggressive approach and get this done that's out of your property. You know, you filling on my property, I don't care. I'm going to be in my house all night. So until I hire my family, I have to pay them. I ain't paying. You've been filling on my property for thirty years. As long as I don't sell my property, I don't have to pay.
And I think the thought process is a, a collection agency hits your credit.
Exactly.
And so I think we did, I forgot what the hurdle was with approaching that, but we did have that conversation.
And I think, I think Dr. Court, Dr. Curry said, you know, we, we're probably going to have to bite the bullet on some of this stuff with position. I'm all for a receptionist position. I think we need to get back to the personal touch as well. I cannot stand calling here during the day and getting that phone recording, that automated message. It's terrible. I hate it. I, I, I think we need to get serious. I think we need to get back to a personal touch and, and dealing with the citizens because, you know, older people and I'm getting that way every day, they can't navigate this stuff. They can't do it. I mean, it's just for real what it is. Even with HR, you know, coming into an automated thing that's different for some things, but some of your older employees, they may not know how to access the internet and type in a password and a, and search for this stuff. They, they may still go to her and have that personal interaction. But, but I, and I do think we need to look at things too with our town hall. Whether it's go out, go up, whatever, we need to, we need to start training that now. And that's what I, I just, I want to know how much we're still paying the county if we could bring that journey back to us? Maybe figure out a way to get him to take everything over ourselves, keep that journey here in town. And I'm just curious about the collection rates and the percentage of fees collected in the town. How, how far, how far, how high are we on collect? And I know you'll never be a hundred percent. I mean, I, I get it. But if they were fifty, we get eighty percent, that's a bit of young.
Collection agency, you pay them on a contingency basis to go to a certain percentage. I said, if you have a collection agency, you'll be paying them on a contingency basis. What they collect, that you'll pay them for a certain percentage of that, I think.
I think that's what creates a more aggressive approach if they get paid when they collect the money.
Yeah, the more money they make, you know, the more they collect, the more they make. And if we're not collecting, we need to complete forty or fifty percent of that, that's better than people.
And it's a dark situation because when you're property owner and we cleaned your yard and cut your grass five, six times, they know we're going to come out there and clean and cut the grass. And a lien, like I said, a lien means absolutely nothing if I'm not selling my house. And sometimes it's a rental property where the landlord doesn't even live in the state. And so it's a, it's a cycle where we've actually tried to identify ways to put more teeth into the enforcement of it. And it's a difference when you talk about code enforcement and collection of fees. That's specifically what you're talking about. So we can be more aggressive. Go back to what you were talking about receptionist, that's something Mr. Martin used to talk about a while, about us losing that personal touch of when you call, I want to hear a voice on the phone as opposed to dial one for this department, dial two.
It takes me about four steps to get me about all of the main lines. It takes me about four different steps.
Thank you, Mary. I think some of this stuff you're talking about, Emily and I have been working with in the house in my neighborhood for three years, probably. So now there is people living in the house sometimes. And I'm piloting off the door to walk out. And I think the police department had a call there a couple of weeks ago because of that. So her job, I don't think any at all. You don't know what she's going to run into. And Kenny, if anyone understands what you're faced with, it's me because I'm a retired building contractor and I've been through all of that stuff at different stages, different certifications. And it's hard to get a person that's educated and qualified in all three or four inspections, not that the electrical or the plumbing and this building and everything. So here's the part where this face with, we're trying to get employees that are trained and educated already. Just because they have a certificate in their hand doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean nothing. It doesn't mean nothing. Uh, so, Kenny, I appreciate everything you do, Emily. I appreciate everything everybody in here does, but there's, sometimes you have to, we have to point out different departments and different people. Uh, and I'm sure we'll get some of the rest of it before the night's over. Thank you.
Chance, you know, we have intern opportunities that are community power. And what I'm thinking about administrative, if we were to, if the town was to obtain an intern, intern project, we, uh, where would we put that individual?
That, that's, it, it's, it's a, it's a very layered, Don knows is my favorite word, it's a very layered, complex issue here. If we identified the solution at the staffing level, where we gonna put them? Um, we're talking about even with, um, interning with FTCC, but the military program.
Yes.
Uh, if they were to come to town hall, where would we put them? Um, we, we actually looked at this at some town hall, a lot of the walls come out low there, so you can't go vertical, you can go, um, expand to the side.
Yeah.
I think we would analyze that a modular trailer in the back where the old east trailer used to be, the Texas trailer, would probably be the most cost-effective. How many offices did you get out of that? And so, we've actually toyed with this, this issue for a while. I'll say personally as manager, it's great to have a board in this system. Um, but I can speak for my department, we've been having this conversation in town for a while, and it's good to be at a priorities dinner, less saying this to a board, it's easier to hear these things, to do something.
And we are. But still, where would, where would we put this intern?
I don't know.
Um, if I may, we, um, engaged with our attorney, Dan Parzak, about interns previously, and so, uh, we kind of determined that it would be better to do it as a full-time employee because we would still have to pay the interns. We can't do unpaid action. They would have to be paid, so it would be better.
Well, I add to that, the military program, see, that's where it gets interns what's getting created.
Right.
Military program is a free program where we had some interns where we did have to pay, that was the military program we actually just executed an agreement with. That is actually tied to a military program where there are, there are certain members uh, transitioned out of the military, the military paying for that.
Through TAP.
Yeah, but that does not answer your question. Where?
Where are we gonna put them?
And so, that's why I said, Don, um...
So, is there a, is there a position of funds? Kenny, in your, in your area, where we could put an individual to answer phones and address anyone that walks to, up to the mansion?
In my opinion, there is, um.
That's where I'm looking.
In front of your office. You got that small table right there.
Reception used to be in that alcove.
You take that table out and put a desk and a phone there, and they got a sliding window, and it could be information. They come to information, and then they go to permanent inspectors, this could let information to the right. And they can set, you can set a receptionist there. Inspector said, of course, you're there, but not in the lobby, cause that lobby gets cold, and for that door.
You could probably cube a lock that door, where that wall is, and first come in with a little cube for partition, to kind of create a little office there too, but, um...
Before it's full term, so you could put one there where your office is.
Yeah.
Right in front, right there, cause then you can office there, and they're right now. Yeah, yeah, so you can play receptionist there.
We have, we have space now, Chance, we've identified. We've worked the bottom.
And that's probably something that would be, um, very expensive to do.
Something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. We got the place, now we just gotta get the person.
Okay, the manager and I have been talking about addition to town hall for, for the two years. Um, and addition would consume the town clerk's office, the ability to go and function in wreck buildings, which you could put a lot of offices down that hallway. Uh, and I guess her office would be the first one in. Uh, anyway, it's, it's, it's not a difficult thing, it's just taking the, putting your feet in the sand and getting ready to do it. Uh, after the expansion of this building, we got a, we got two honorable tips for a while before we go into another expansion program, but we didn't need that room.
No doubt about it.
Thank you.
Okay, Chance, sounds like an agenda item coming up for us to consider and take some action on. Okay?
You're allowed to.
Board, you okay with this?
True. Was that something you want in this year's budget, or are we talking about for next year?
We need to see what goes.
Let's look at it for this year's budget. Let's see what we're looking at.
And, and Don, you had something to say?
Oh, I thought it was my, that the receptionist used to be when I first started, in that alcove outside the mayor's office.
And what about, uh, what about your office? Somebody you said, Tim Correll, the Bible just is gonna help us get, get through the program, said again, we need these positions, we need these people, wherever we wanna put them, I don't think it's an option, um, they have to start looking into expanding the building or not the building, I don't think we have much of our option, because it's gonna take the building several years to be completed, and then the interim to town is, is kind of like, well, we're going over the police situation now, now we back to, you know, two, three, four, five, six years. And we don't wanna do that because we have a projection that the growth is coming, we can't wait for it to get here on top of us. So, I think all of these ideas are good, I think it applies a little bit of time, but not much time.
Um, getting back with the, uh, interns, I think, I mean, that wouldn't have to be a budget issue if we just get them, you know, as soon as possible, um...
That's, that's not a budget issue, I was just identifying which department would need the interns and tell them where to work.
I was trying to cheat and flipping through, I mean, a lot of the stuff, if, until we can get termite positions, we could give supplement, a lot of, um, shortfalls with interns from military and, you know, especially, uh, you know, forty-two outfits, well, it was human resources, a lot of their stuff is, essentially it's clerk work, it's not human relations, uh, human resources related, they can sit and answer from, you can get some specialists, have a load of answer upon, and they'll be happy to do it.
They're going through TAP every day.
Yeah, so.
Every day. Good.
We do have, as the manager mentioned, the, um, we set up the area where the police trailer used to be, that is set for water, sewer, and electricity to have a modular unit come out there. And I think the detectives trailer, when it was out there, I believe it had eight offices in it.
Kenny, for a modular, what's an estimate on how many offices did you think were the largest out of offices?
Yeah, so for a commercial business office, you have a modular, you can, you can kind of design how you want. You can get six, seven, eight offices, plus your bathrooms, plus the conference room. And, you know, and to do a term key, in my opinion, cause I, I was in that business for a long time, to do a business office modular like that, you're probably, in this day and time, um, I say term key, delivery, you know, your water needs shorter, your, electrical and mechanical, and your foundation and all the stuff, comes along with the cab yards, probably looking at half a million dollars. Yeah. Do you, do you ten years' gain to go up to two hundred? By the way, price.
I don't know, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I feel modular trailers can't wait. Um, I, I bet we need to, if we're gonna stand back and learn, I bet we need to look at something permanent, and, uh, you know, an expansion since it's gonna last just a few years to come. Me, I just look at a modular as a band aid and a temporary thing.
Right.
I don't think that's the way we need to do it.
The only, the only issue I think that that is, we got...
Drew, to answer your question, let's look at what it will take to convert that space in town hall, that's right outside the mayor's office. That's what I'm looking at, on this year's budget. But, just, just wanna, just wanna see what, how much it's gonna cost us to convert that? Uh, I mean, here we are in January, we've got six months before we get into the next budget. I just think we're gonna do something else, time will look at it and, and put it on.
I think, I think the impact of what it would create, what Kenny, the department would be, um, massive. You can basically create a receptionist, where all of a sudden, uh, with the involvement can be specifically dedicated to, uh, permit, then permit, permit tech, this, I think that would be better in power.
And then spaces that we would need for offices, I don't think that one space would be the best insurance to give, have to take care of one person, cause how about if the other people are just needing assistance or new offices? Uh, I personally think the addition to town hall would be the long-term answer because code building is not too grown. It's still gonna grow, and we're gonna need that to have a place to put the employees that, that come in to, to run the town in the future. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right.
That's why I'm tired of it.
Y'all wanna take a break? It's not exceptionally short. Y'all take a break, use restroom, whatever. All right. One more, play five minutes of work. No. Just next to the computer room, the computers after seven o'clock start to pump the temperature of the office.
Buy some time, get something, something constructive.
Chance, we're being, cause that's for big shit.
They're debating on your win. Uh, you said they're playing and, there was some... That's what I told you, right? To get off to everybody.
It's hard, you just got a trailer, and then in three months, they leave, you bring them up, and got a trailer.
So, we did it one year, I mean, planning it. I mean, you know, you gotta, uh, you gotta train with it, you get to do it. Well, we always try to do that. We had, we had, um, we had one who did some, he actually worked out.
If I got a cell, I would want to let him get it. Do something. Okay, who's gonna give them some of their stuff? Cause we're all in a routine. You know? They have to ask, um, I have to go back, but I gave them the...
Yep. All right, folks, you about ready? About ready for smart two, beating off with fire?
Emily, um, Emily, did you hear anything back today about, I think, I know that he was feeling, so, I don't know what happened after that, but I could look it up, I, I saw it. Yeah, so, I want to see why he can't, like, to have a... Who would have had the call to get that? Like, the backyard, one of these terms.
Uh, their city code number on it, if not address, if they'll figure that, then she'll be able to show it off. Because somebody probably is paying for it.
Yeah, and he doesn't live there. So... She's in the town or... It's been a... I guess, yeah. I guess, yeah.
Power. We don't, we don't come... No, you gotta tell.
February sixth, come up with your priority. We can stick through here and we can add to it without priority. What's our priority? Do you know what the priority of March seventh? You got a whole... Tonight, we're getting to meet. On February, we give you the tables. The fans and the grand...
I thought through this, find the line of coding that's around you. Who's next?
What I'm keeping, what I'm firing.
They keep pushing.
Can you do that? That's the room for the horse?
Yep. Nice thirty. Thirty more. All right, we're back. Now, we have a fire department.
Good evening. As I said, uh, and stated before, my, uh, three priorities are as listed here. Pretty cut and dry. Um, want to unfreeze the three firefighter positions that were frozen in the last budget. Um, the, uh, second is probably the most important and DC is gonna pass some, uh, stuff out to you just as an example. As to what we're looking at each time we have our, uh, truck serviced or if a repair is necessary. I'd like you to look at the amounts.
Um, the first few pages are just the annual service cost on those apparatus. The final two pages, they actually do the deal. Um, the final two pages, the big money items you see there are mechanical seals that had to be replaced with one of the pumps on the trucks and it's one of those. Want to open it. Um, the second handout I have here has velocity on the top. Um, this is a quote for a twenty-one twelve, just to fix the oil that's on it right now. That's after the annual service and such that it's not over. Maintenance costs for specialty equipment, and that's anything from construction equipment
to fire apparatus, has skyrocketed. Part of it is, uh, they're outsourcing a lot of the parts for these trucks. There's very little in the fire service or emergency services that are made in the USA. Majority of them are outsourced into foreign countries. You got terrorists that are, uh, tearing them up when they come into port. And then, of course, delivery time is also a problem. So, it's not just the unit cost for maintaining these trucks, it's also the wait time in between when the parts are ordered for specific needs and the actual delivery time to North Carolina. So, last year, my maintenance, uh, budget was reduced by ten thousand dollars. And as you can see, one item on one truck can cost up to that. So, it's necessary for us to have that money back so we can keep these vehicles on the road. And then, the third priority is, once again, we're not in an independent, um, payroll study, we're in the one with the town. So, barring changes from that, my goal is to try to adjust salaries for my midline staff, uh, within the, uh, amounts of the salary range. And I'd be happy to field any of your questions.
Who installs these parts?
Ma'am.
Who installs the parts?
The second handout you have there that has velocity on the top, that is our contract We have two. We have CW Williams, who pretty much works on, uh, pumps and electrical systems on these trucks, computer systems and such. And then, velocity is our mechanical maintenance, contract maintenance. Because, just like almost everything nowadays, everything is specialized, it takes special proprietary tools and special training that's only issued by the manufacturer.
And this allows... Is, uh, a work...
Yes, ma'am. They're up, uh, Chickenfoot Road, um, and, uh, they've been, they used to be H and H Freight Line, but they were bought out by a company out of California called Velocity. Sir.
So, do you want your ten thousand back?
Want my ten?
Do you want to plus that up by ten? Is that what you're asking, or you just want your ten back?
I think if we can just get our ten back, we'll be in pretty good shape.
Okay, that's one question. The other one...
Hey, Bobby.
And I don't know, I don't know the background. I've been on the board since last year, but what's the background on freezing three firefighter positions from last year?
That would be a question for finance.
Okay. The previous manager, there were, I guess, at that time, there were some vacancies in the fire department. And I think they had, I think there were five vacancies at that time. And so, usually, they would hire somebody, there'd be another vacancy. So, it's almost like there was a rotation of, there was usually three vacancies at any given time throughout the year. So, the previous manager thought, "Well, if it's an ongoing, usually three vacancies," because we can probably get through a budget year with leaving those vacant and they still have enough to function with. So, not current year, but previous years have been frozen. This year, they're still frozen and they just, you know, they're approved positions, they've just been frozen.
So, they've been frozen since twenty-one. That budget year.
Yes.
Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Not the current, yes, twenty-one, twenty-two budget.
So, they were frozen in twenty-one, twenty-two budget?
They still are, hence current year.
They're still frozen.
Frozen and unfunded.
That's even worse.
Well, they're frozen.
Essentially, it's the same thing. If they're frozen, means they're not funded.
How does this impact your mission, do you?
Well, we haven't got, uh, any less busy, I'll put it that way. So, um, you know, the chief, myself, the fire marshal and the deputy chief, we all run calls, okay? None of us are sitting in the office. So, a lot of meetings that are done, uh, and held, I'm unable to attend because I'm running calls. Okay? It's just the nature of the business. So, everybody in my department is at. There, we don't have any admin positions where somebody's just sitting behind a desk. Um, so, minimum manning, uh, especially at night when the full-time day staff goes home, it can be problematic.
Yeah.
So, uh, we have remedies in place that are remedies kinda in name only because we have contracts with other departments for mutual aid, first responder contracts. However, if they're out on a call, they're not coming to us, they're responding to their call. So, at night is a problem because we don't normally get dispatched to just one call. There's multiple calls happening, squads out on a call, engines on a call, and a, uh, and the ladder truck can be out. So, the, basically, the station is abandoned. So, yeah, I mean, minimum manning for us is critical because you have, uh, the lives of people that are on emergency calls at stake.
Anybody else got a comment?
Um, a prime example of what Chief was talking about, um, with automatic aid, mutual aid, and contract sessions, we all work together. Um, I'll give you a prime example. About two weeks ago, my wife's brother passed off fire over both Calvin Drive. The station that manns that area were already out on a firefight call. One of our engines was the first truck on the scene and provided fire tag for that incident. As that station four under N C, as they freed up, they responded as well. But you've got station nineteen, station three, station five upon Coon Road and City Units, all responding to this call. I was taking my wife to her brother's house and by the time I got to Calvin, um, Cotton had a medical call, so they dispatched next to boat, yes, it was us. So, we sent a truck to that call. By the time I got there, we popped another call and I told my wife, I was like, "Hey, when we pull up, get out, I'll be back at the ten because I'm going to the station." Because it popped, this was such a fire call, rather than walking, and it wasn't about you. Uh, luckily, it weren't such a fire. It was a legal fire. But that's just a prime example of how quick, it don't take about two calls and when you got five heads or ten heads, you're out of people. And if three, four, us thirteen, any of us get a working fire call, you're not getting anybody else in much time, such. If you do, you're very lucky.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody else? Is that it?
I don't have a question for Chief. Last year, and we've done it a couple of other times, we had a meeting with our delegation to kind of give them a route of some priorities or some wants and needs, but we have, can we organize something like that again, just so it's on their radar and we have something prepared to submit to them, submit contracts for them to, uh, submit their budget to the state as well.
We're working that for us. It's like, we're gonna talk about it tomorrow.
Good.
Yeah. And that's just, I'm honestly about to tell you.
Was there a delegation? I'm unfamiliar with that.
Someone, a legislature, like, uh, Senator Hodges, having, uh, sit down and win to discuss, somebody to meet with, see what's appropriate, so...
Ah, that would have been Chief Hodges. At, at the time, DC's position was mine, so my, my job was to run the fire department in his administration. I brought my fire marshal in here to answer a question that Commissioner Marley brought up about collections. So, Bobby, I'll let you go and address that.
Very, very good.
Good evening. The, uh, just to kind of bring you up to, to speed on, on what we do as far as the fire marshal side or the fire prevention side. Uh, we do the inspections on the commercial businesses in town. Uh, as of today, there are six hundred and fourteen listed in the occupancy list for commercial businesses. That includes, uh, foster homes as well. Uh, so, we inspect those. When we go out and inspect a business, a, a business up to say twenty-five hundred square feet is a seventy-five dollar fire inspection fee. Uh, we do not prepay those before we go out. We go out and inspect the business, we give an invoice, uh, email invoice to the business owner where they can click the link to pay it online, they can submit a check, they can call us over the phone. As of October first, we tried to relieve some pressure from Brother Kenny Tatum and we had taken over the fire inspections and collecting of the money through the fire department side of the house. Uh, you're looking at the collection agency. I keep, okay? Uh, forty-one hundred dollars is uncollected as of tonight, okay? If I call you, Mr. Legg, and say, "Hey, I was just calling to remind you about your fire inspection," I'll take care of it tomorrow, okay? Two months, three months, am I gonna put a lane on this grass? I don't know. You know, uh, you know, in addition to calling and, and making, you know, "Hey, can you take care of this?" We've got inspections to go out and take care of because they're scheduled, there's maintenance inspections on these businesses. Kenny knows, he's been on the fire side of it. Commissioner Marley knows, there's one year, two year, and three year inspections. We have just recently, thankfully, filled the assistant fire marshal position. So, uh, but again, I've heard it said tonight, we need more streets, we need more public works, we need more infrastructure, more businesses, more fire inspectors. So, uh, but, and also, we have fire prevention side, but, you know, anything about has any questions, I don't, I don't mind answering them.
How many years will it be? Or does it keep rolling over from one to the two?
It keeps rolling. Yes, ma'am.
So, Bobby...
Yes.
When did you say, when did you send it up? Uh, August fourth, uh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty-three, last year. So, from August, so what you're saying, from August, now there's forty, forty-seven hundred dollars?
Forty-one hundred dollars, it's not collected.
So, that, that probably goes up every day if you do inspections that they don't pay, right?
Yeah, and it's not everybody. I mean, we had an inspection this morning that was, uh, the guy was out taking care of, and before he was even back by lunch, the guy was calling wanting to make payment. And, and I took this, I...
One, one get that is, so, so when you leave a bill, unless that person is just honest and pays the bill, if they don't pay the bill, there's no report.
Correct. And before we took it over, Miss Vonda and Miss Whitney up front, that's doing Kenny's permitting, they were calling people collecting our fire inspection fees and they were trying to take care of their permit fees for elec-, uh, electricity and plumbing and fences and sheds and so, uh, it's a big bowl of soup.
What's the solution? What do we need to do, Bobby?
I'm, I'm really not sure, mayor. Uh, I mean, a collection agency maybe can put the...
Yes.
The screws to them a little more, you know? I mean, it would free up a person, myself or the assistant fire marshal, from sitting up there at the phone and calling and saying, "Hey, you need to pay your..." You, you know, there's no, I guess, maybe repercussion is not the right word, but, I mean, I'll pay it, I'll take care of it. And, I mean, did you put a percentage so it increases if it's not paid? I mean...
See, all that would have to be something that you folks would have to approve, you know, as far as putting any teeth into that. One of the problems with a, uh, collection agency, although there, there are a great deal, they take a percentage, but there's also some personal information for the individual that owes the bill that would become public. And that can be problematic because there's gonna be legal action taken on their behalf once their stuff becomes public. Now, we can say, "Hey, you know, we're gonna, uh, try to keep that as private as possible," but, you know, this world is very litigious and I believe that would be something that would have to be negotiated into, uh, a contract with a collection agent.
Something we have started as well in, in the, our fire inspection side is a new business, a new location, and this is just commercial, not residential side. But a new building comes in, they have to put a fire alarm system in, they have to put a sprinkler system and so forth. We charge a permit fee. I charge a plan review fee for my fire plan review because I'm reviewing that plan. They shouldn't get it for free. I mean, I'm using time and, and education, I have to have, Kenny was talking about, to review those fire plans and then based on how many devices, how big it is, we realized, "Hey, this is some funds that, that we can bring in to the fire prevention side of the house." Uh, sometimes thousands of dollars, like ten and twelve thousand dollars for one permit. And, and they paid it. You know, I mean, these are construction companies that are building, you know, a larger type building. and then based on how many devices, how big it is, we realized, hey, this is some funds that, that we can bring in to the fire prevention side of the house. Uh, sometimes thousands of dollars, like ten and twelve thousand dollars for one permit. And, and they paid it. You know, I mean, these are construction companies that are building, you know, a, a larger type building.
They pay the maintenance on the year.
So, you know, it's, I mean, four thousand dollars today is really not a lot of money. But, you know, as the town grows, it, it was a, you know, Walmart pays and places like that, but, you know, we're trying our best, and we'll continue to try our best to, to make it happen on our side. But the more help, uh, most definitely, whether it's the fire prevention side or the suppression side, absolutely.
Mayor? Maybe that's something we should look into, is getting, at least getting information about the collection agency. Kenny, are you, you're, they're not collecting any code enforcement, Marley should be, are you?
No, that's a different department. Um, so far as all the building permit fees that we collect, we take it up front for the, for the permit fee.
Yeah, yeah.
And the biggest difference between us and them, they just say, they need a maintenance inspection. So, they're ready to go out, so they do their inspections, and they gotta go.
Yeah.
And they need maintenance inspections, so they have to collect, they do that, and they leave a bill, and it's, I've been on the fire side, been around and everything. It is, it is a tough deal, because some of these folks will find their problem, like Bobby said, you got, you always go at ten percent, if you're chasing.
And it's, uh, and they change. I mean, there might be Bobby's barber shop today, and then I ride by next week, and it's a paint and body shop or something. I'm like, well, what in the world?
Or a baby shop.
Yeah, oh, yeah. But, uh, now, I can't, I can't remember, and I'm, I'm gonna hush right quick, I promise, but one of my fire marshal friends, I can't remember where it's at, uh, they incorporated in the property tax, the fire inspection fee. So, there is no collecting. You pay your property tax on that building you own, it's taken care of.
Solution.
That's like tax on your, on your car now.
Yes.
And I can't, I can't remember where it's from, but I can find out.
Do we do that group?
It's a possibility, but then, in that year, they need to be inspected. Do we do all of them every year?
No, there's two and three-
Yeah.
I don't use, I don't use the dump site down there on Black Street Rock, but I pay dump. I, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I don't use, I don't use the car.
That's why we have it.
I mean, you know, but the building, I'm inspecting the building, not the business.
That's right.
The building ain't going nowhere. The body, the barber shop may go, but the paint and body shop is going in that same mortar building.
Over the property owner.
Yeah, the property owner pays property tax, not the business.
And see, once a building is built, once it's permitted, built, and everything is done with it, we inherit it now for its life. So, the responsibility for us to inspect it is incumbent upon us and to maintain that, uh, that schedule. But like Bobby says, the building's there, and it's owned by somebody, but it's rare, especially in this town, it's rare that the person that owns the building owns the business. So, that's where it begins to get convoluted. Programmed. Does anybody have anything else? Anything else for us?
Last thing, uh, you know, we don't really take this, Chance, it's just gonna take.
The, the issue with fire and code enforcement is always in the team.
Let's, let's, let's do, let's, there's some homework for the staff, bring us back some.
All right, next to the police.
Good evening. Uh, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Mitch Dever. I'm one of the new captains over at the support services division at the police department, and I'm here on behalf of Chief Dollinger. Chief wanted me to relay each of you that he's sorry he couldn't be here this evening. Uh, he had a already scheduled trip, uh, prior to this meeting being rescheduled due to the weather Tuesday. So, he sent me. With that said, Chief will be available by telephone if we need to for any questions you may have. If you have any questions that I can't answer this evening, I promise you, I will get you an answer by tomorrow. I am new, uh, here within the past couple of weeks of taking over, uh, some of the budget responsibilities for the police department, so I'm getting up to speed just as you are. With that said, the three priorities that we're looking at is number one, pay. We're not gonna beat a dead horse. We are very appreciative of what the board and the staff members have done up to this point, working with this and seeing what a critical issue it is for the police department and just the town in general. Uh, we're optimistic, but I would tell you, this is not just the number one priority for the chief and the department overall, but it is the number one priority for every officer that works for our town. That is number one. Number two, increasing staffing. Heard a lot of discussion this evening in regards to the town continuing to grow. Well, our police services have to continue to grow as well. Right now, we are at forty-six, uh, sworn positions, and we would like to see that increase to fifty-four. Through research and statistics, um, that would put us about where we'd need to be in regards to F B I standards. As we continue to recruit businesses to come into our town, recruit families, continue annexation, as well as, you know, continuing to increase, um, involvement in community activities and so forth, it's important that we provide, you know, strong police services. Because the bottom line is this, no matter what kind of schools you're offering, uh, no matter what kind of, uh, a, a low tax base you're offering, if people don't feel like their families are gonna be safe, if businesses don't feel like their investment is gonna be protected and secure, they're not gonna come here. So, in order for us to do that, we're looking to increase our staffing. We're also looking at, uh, possibly, uh, hiring a part-time intel analyst who would work in the evening hours. Uh, we do have one full-time analyst, but what I can tell you is, over time, solving crimes has become more and more targeted towards social media, internet, um, you know, the technical aspects. It's always gonna be foot on the ground, ability to talk to people, but this has helped us solve so many crimes, and that intel analyst is able to provide us those type of resources. Third, vehicles. If you're not familiar, uh, the police department incor- um, incorporated, uh, Enterprise leasing program some time ago. Now, let me tell you what that does for us. Last year, it's my understanding that the police department spent approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in maintenance repairs. All right, that is because our fleet is old. As we began using Enterprise, and we've started to phase out some of those old vehicles, we have reduced that amount dramatically. But the other thing is this, as we have cars in the program, Enterprise will actually give us a timeframe of when we should try and sell those cars, so that way, we get as much equity out of it as we can, and those funds return back into the program. And I can tell you right now, we have five vehicles that we need to replace as soon as possible because they're a continuous problem. So, I would open to, open up to any questions at this time.
How many total vehicles do we need to replace?
We're looking to replace five right now, Commissioner Marley.
Five vehicles?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Did you get, uh, the cars serviced and repaired here? Or do you go somewhere else about that?
It depends on what the, the repair calls for. If it would just be maintenance, like an oil change or something like that, that would be handled here at the town garage. If it's something that calls for a specialty, we may have to outsource it to another repair shop or even possibly a dealership.
Uh, well, I was just telling that, uh, all of the parts in John's side were tied up.
No, ma'am. That is not true.
The vehicles that need replacing, are these like the police cruisers, or are these like the regular vehicles, like?
These will be, are actually marked police vehicles. Now, this morning, uh, during our grant meeting, two vehicles that I discussed was one, a Sprinter van for a command post, and also a minivan for our victim witness coordinator. Uh, if you weren't able to listen in or attend that meeting this morning, the Sprinter van would be used as a command post. All right, that van, it would be large enough where we could put workstations in, uh, to conduct interviews at scenes. It would also be a workstation for our intel analyst who, uh, could work, um, you know, reviewing social media, postings, things like that, if we needed them to, uh, also other things that, um, you know, investigate, investigative techniques that we utilize through, you know, our technical services. It also gives us an opportunity to utilize it in a regional setting. Uh, we're a member of a task force that includes members of law enforcement from Robles County, Hope County, and here in Cumberland County. But it also could be very beneficial in, you know, if unfortunately, we have to deal with, uh, some type of catastrophic situation. Let's say that the fire department, uh, they couldn't get in somewhere. We could possibly put several of their firefighters. If it's somewhere where we need to take ten police officers, but we couldn't get ten police vehicles down there, we could put individuals in those vans and transport them. And, you know, yes, it would primarily be for the town of Hope Mills, but, you know, as the fire department side knows, we're all gonna help each other out. So, we're looking at grants for that. With the minivan for the victim witness coordinator, uh, unfortunately, there's times where we have to call them out to assist us from the law enforcement side. We have to relocate family members because of whatever the situation is. The minivan, i- if you go, uh, and I'd be happy to show anyone who'd like to sit, we have an area here in the police department for our victim witness coordinator that has personal hygiene supplies, snacks, uh, toys, anything that we might need to help support a family. With that minivan, we could, you know, store those supplies in there. We would, uh, kid them out with car seats for kids, and we would help give them the resources and relocate them in whatever way we needed to, to ensure their safety. But a big part of it is, with the minivan, it would not be marked, um, we, because we're trying to lessen that trauma that that child, that young teenager, young adult, may be going through. And so, we try and take the law enforcement approach out of it as much as possible. That would be the need of those two vehicles.
I heard you say that before, and, uh, what was your name? Laura, um, she was angry.
Mm-hmm.
She was, sounded like that she was gonna really try to help you get those two vans.
And we certainly hope so. Yes, ma'am.
What has happened to them? All commands, uh, that was in the rebuilt bus?
Are you referring to, it's kind of like the, I heard that there was a, like, an old library mobile type? Yeah, I have no idea, Commissioner, uh, but I can tell you, yeah, it's probably very out of date from what I've been told. It would not be able to, uh, give us the resources needed to run laptops, internet, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so, another part of my question, so the, the five vehicles that need replacement, it's not, you're not looking necessarily for one-on-one swap? So, we got five marked cruisers that need replacement, you're like, maybe get a minivan instead of a cruiser kind of thing?
No, no word.
Before, before I forget this information, I was gonna ask, like, um, as far as my special equipment and stuff, and like, uh, I know previously that I think we've done, like, where instead of getting, we, instead of getting marked cruisers, I think we've done, like, regular vehicles to supplement, you know, instead of having them, like, a turbocharger and stuff like that. No? No, never mind. But never mind. Never mind. But, yeah, if you're gonna explain, like, what vehicles are pending coming off and what you want to replace and where?
It would be five marked police vehicles.
Okay.
And the grant route would be for the Sprinter van that would be utilized as a command post, and the minivan for the victim witness advocate.
Are these five vehicles part of the C I P rotation, or?
Yes, but C I P replacement is kind of shifted now that we're doing the Enterprise replacement, but we still try to keep it on a five-to-six vehicle rotation. Because what happens is, if we were to get eight vehicles at a time, and then several years from now, we're gonna replace eight vehicles. It's easier to do when you have, uh, a lower number to replace each year.
How, how many cars have we replaced through the Enterprise, or some out of the fleet? Or better, maybe the better question would be, how many vehicles does the town own?
I think there were four originally with the Enterprise, and then we did another six. But the second six that you ordered are still getting-
Being processed, yes, sir.
They're in process now.
That's kind of where I was going, but I know there's another six in the pipeline.
Yes, because what-
It's not been delivered.
Right.
Well, they, they are pending being, uh, equipped with blue lights, radio, all the emergency equipment.
Yeah, they just haven't been, I mean, delivered completely packaged.
Correct, sir.
So, that's what we're waiting on, and that's what this budget is.
Yes, sir. That is my understanding.
And if we were probably to do again, another five or six, that would probably be those five that you mentioned.
Correct.
I'm assuming that's what you're hoping.
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just wanted to know where that six, is that the other six in the pipeline? I just didn't know, I, I didn't think they've been delivered yet. But there'll be, when do you expect them?
Uh, we're in communication, uh, with the, uh, installers now. There, there has been a lapse in receiving parts and pieces, uh, and you'll, you'll get that a lot. And unfortunately, there are times where you put in an order today, and you may not get what you need for six, seven, eight months. Unfortunately, you're at the will of the manufacturers and the distributors.
Drew, have we sold all of our surplus vehicles?
The ones that have been surplus, yeah, they're all gone.
They're all gone. And these five, if we were to replace these, these will become surplus as well? And there's no, if no other location, we could repurpose them for use in the town?
If they're repurposable, we usually try to do that, but based on the use of these cars?
We, we have vehicles, folks, that have like a hundred and fifty-five thousand miles on them.
Yeah. Yeah, well, you're not a big one to quit.
They broke into it.
I was looking, there are two vehicles, or at least one, for code enforcement, but, uh, if you're saying that they cannot be repurposed?
I would not recommend it.
Okay. All right, all, okay, all the surplus they go. Anything else? All right, Chance.
All right, next to the, come on in, come on in.
That is not me, but I'll sit in there and take some of the other. Okay, now the fun begins. All right, a lot of mine mirror what the manager was looking for in, in his. I don't necessarily need a lot for my department. We get by with the bare bones that we need to do in the finance department. It's usually routine, it's usually the same type of things. Year after year, we try to replace a computer each year, so that if we do one computer each year, then none of our computers are ever five years old. So, it just puts them on a rotation. But as far as the, uh, four things I have listed here, tax increase to fund priorities. We have not had a tax increase since I've been here. I don't believe we've had a tax increase since, I think it was two thousand and fourteen, and that was for police officers. I don't believe we've had a tax increase since, I think it was 2014, and that was for police officers. We need the pay study. We've been talking about this for the last couple of years, and we got to this point, now we have to have one, because we're behind, and we need to do that. The sales tax shortfall that's coming up, not this next budget year, it's the year after that, roughly 1.9 million. And then the future parks and rec bonds, the parks and rec and streets. We talked about doing it this past fall, but one of the things we need to have in order to do that, well, I'll, I'll get to that one. I'll go back and talk about some of the other things we've got going on here. All the things that have been presented to you tonight, and you haven't even heard all of them. We still have public works, we still have parks and rec. And there's a reason they're last, they've got a lot, and we need all of them. Every year of the budget, we need all of them. Ask Chance, or how much were we over requests versus revenues with the budget we presented them for this year? Eight million dollars. Eight million was requested from each of these departments, and we had to find a way to eliminate or cut or raise the revenue or do something to get it to balance, to present to you a balanced budget. And we did that. But that wasn't just this year, that's every year since I've been here. And I didn't know whether I should take it as a compliment or not when the mayor said at the last, when you balanced the budget or at the workshop, she said, Drew, just do what you do, which is balance the budget. And I can keep doing that, but every year it gets more and more difficult because we need all of these things. You know, I didn't want to freeze the three firearms, but when the manager said that year, let's freeze those positions, as the budget person, done, because that saved us this much money, so I can get closer to balancing. These types of things, when we go back to each department and say, we need another 10% taken out of your budget, and then we come back with, I've got nothing to cut. Or we cut something, and then it gets down, I have to have that, so we put it back in, still not balanced. So, we only have so much revenues. We did raise some fees last year, which helped a lot, but then again, a lot of these fees from the growth from inspections, guess what, the inspection fees are dedicated to the inspections department. We can't use them for other things. Salary increases with this pay study, we want to do that. I would love to do that for everybody, we talked about doing a 5% across the board with this next budget if we had gotten what we requested with that tax increase last year. But that didn't happen, that was gonna go towards this pay study. Well, now it's not here, because it wasn't approved. So with each salary increase, there's also benefits with that. And I will tell you, we have great benefits for this town. Not everybody thinks about that, but the longer you work, the more important those benefits become when you realize you have. But a lot of people aren't working a long time at the same place anymore. Over seventy-five percent of our employees have less than five years with the town. Not a longevity. So we are looking at increasing some different benefits and things based on what is most important to the employees. The other thing with all these projects that we're bringing up tonight, all these projects that we're talking about getting grants for, that's great, we need them, and I hate to be the just a, but, there we go. Yeah, the Debbie Downer here. But with every project that we complete, there's more operational costs that go with that. When we finish Heritage Park, he's gonna need more maintenance staff, he's gonna need people to take care of that. Every new subdivision comes in, we need more in streets. You know, and it's not just those two departments, we need more police, we need more fire, we need all of them. So with every police officer we add, there's vehicle, equipment, all those different things. So, we need to just be cognizant of, for every one thing that we add, it adds that much more with other things. We had the audit presented at the last meeting, he said, we're very well financial. He showed that the last three years, we've had an increase, but I don't know if you actually noticed what the amount of those increases were for each year. About a hundred thousand dollars. That's not adding to our reserves, and it's almost all I can do as the budget officer to keep it that way, because we don't want to dip into our reserves, especially if we want to do bonds in the future. Because all of a sudden, people won't want to buy our bonds, because we've had negative returns each year in our budget. We also recommended with this year's budget to not use sales tax, so we could increase fund balance in preparation for the 1.9 shortfall coming up. So everything that we've added this year, if you notice, if you look at those budget amendments, what's on the revenue side? It's either interest income or sales tax. So we were hoping to put about four hundred thousand dollars in the fund balance to help with a couple of years from now. But the things that we've added to this year's budget, that's the only revenue I've got any play in. That's the only contingency that we have, and so if we add a receptionist, we need it. So that'll be like a thirty-two thousand dollar salary with the benefits. It's probably gonna be around fifty to sixty thousand dollars. How am I gonna pay for that? Just cut it to an account. Okay, guess what, it's gonna be sales tax. So that's another sixty thousand, not gonna go to fund balance. I don't have the reserves that I'd like to have when we have the 1.9% shortfall, not percent, 1.9 million shortfall. These are the things that I have to think about, and I want to do everything, but we can't. We have the lowest tax rate in Cumberland County. I don't know that that's something really to brag about. That's good from a residential standpoint, but when we have to start cutting services, you know, where's the benefit? I have lower taxes, I don't have police and fire, inspections, parks, I don't have these amenities that should come with my taxes. So, other towns in the county have raised their tax rates two or three times since I've been here, but ours, we haven't touched. We just did with the last cost of living, we don't have any employees making less than fifteen dollars an hour, which was a goal that we had. Me and HR talked about that a while. So, that is a good thing, but along with that, you saw what it costs just to double the longevity for this year, and the difference in the 1.75 and 2.5 cost of living was seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's salary and benefits, that's everything. And people questioned, hey, is that right? Was that the whole two and a half percent? Nope, it was just a point seven five and double longevity. The employees really appreciated it, that was great, wish we could do more, but again, that's seventy-seven thousand. It either came out of interest expense or sales tax, that's seventy-seven thousand, that's not gonna go into reserves to help with the 1.9 we have year after next. So now to the bonds. So, we could do bonds at any time, but what we don't want to do is fail at that. So if we get the bonds ready for a referendum in the fall of '25, that's our next election. We don't want to have an election by itself, because the voter turnout's bad enough here, we need to have it alongside an election. So if we do that and it passes, just say it's fifteen million dollars. Say ten for parks and rec, five for streets. Then those funds will be available the next spring, 2026. The debt begins a year after you start using the money. So the first debt payment wouldn't start until the next spring. But if we wait till July of '26, that buys us a whole nother budget here. And then the first debt wouldn't be till the July of '27. So as budget, I have to think, if it buys us another year, that's another year, if we have to do a tax increase with the bonds, we can put it off an extra year, so we can use the tax increase to help with that shortfall of the sales tax or all these other projects that we have. I prefer not to do a sales tax, but I don't know where else the revenues are coming from to do all of these things. If we get the grants, that's great, but again, grant pays for a project, project costs more operations to go with that. And there's usually not grants for operations, it's usually project and things of that nature. So again, I hate to be the Debbie Downer, but with everything that we want to do, there's gotta be an offset. The offset is the revenue, where's the revenue coming from? My job is to think about that, that's what you pay me to do, that's what I have to come up with. Everybody says, well, Drew can make it happen, I'll make it happen, but we can do a whole lot more if we have more revenues to work with. So, any questions?
Drew, this is part of why we're in this room tonight, because we're doing an internal assessment of where we are. Where we were last year coming into this budget, that's why we're getting at it early in January, to see exactly what the needs and requirements are currently, and then looking going forward of how we're going to fund these needs over the next five months, because we only have so much revenue to work with. So you hit the nail on the head, definitely. In the past ten years, how much annexation has come into the town, Hope Mills? Anybody? The last ten years, how much annexation, rooftops, construction, residential and commercial has come into Hope Mills?
I would say in the last ten years, I would say probably in the last three years, we used to average maybe two annexations a year ten years ago. Then we hit twenty about two years ago, and the last three years have been significant. And so what happens is, we're talking about sales tax, we're talking about revenue coming to the town, you always hear sometimes a negative connotation about how much is going. If we're talking about rooftops, and you're talking about economic development, you're not gonna bring a high-end retail or grocery store without rooftops. So what happens is, when you see an influx of the residential development, that's how you get the high-end retail construction. If you're talking about, Drew mentioned this at board meeting, where he was talking about, he gave him a piece of paper that had the top ten revenue generators in terms of taxes for the town. Eighty percent of it were apartment complexes. Now I'll say that again, we had our apartment complexes recently approved, and we got hammered for approving them. People don't realize, you can't say, don't raise my taxes, and kill the ability of development company that will help us bring money into the town without having the tax increase. And so, and it's almost like a cycle. You get the residential, you're gonna get your, your high-end, large-scale development, which now increases the quality of life for your town, which brings in more money for the town. And so that's something where we look at, but you gotta do it properly, because when we're looking at a four-acre building, Kenny will look like he's about to throw something at me, because you gotta do inspections. And, and I'll speak to inspectors again, when you're talking about two level three inspectors across the board, they're unicorns, because out of those nineteen inspectors you got in City Fairville, how many of them are level three? One. So what happens is, you have so many inspectors in the City Fairville, you have an entire division that only does electrical, a whole group that only does mechanical. We got two guys doing everything you see in the town. So, inland, I'm bringing in another resident, I'm gonna need to do one of them. I'll say it again, everything you see built, from a storage shed that's not even in, to a large-scale construction, a commercial building, to a single-family residential house, we've probably got nine subdivisions under construction right now. Georgetown Stakes has three hundred houses, just one subdivision. You got two guys at level three, you got four inspectors in the apartment now, but that's recent. And so as we grow from a development standpoint, you have to increase the staff levels to deal with it, because saying no to development, that revenue's gonna go down as well.
They're just gonna go somewhere else.
And they're just gonna go somewhere else, what's gonna happen is, they're just gonna develop in the county, and we don't get anything. Yes, sir.
And the top taxpayers are the top taxpayers of most families apartments? One top, like you're saying, the top revenue bridge of most families, and I'm gonna say this, because it's called the record now, the one apartment complex, that's a forty-seven million dollar complex.
Forty, I'll say it again, forty-seven million dollars, that's one development.
That's half of what we call the sweet three, and I'll tell y'all about.
Yeah.
About your ass, almost half for one complex. If you get three or four of them, come on. We'll be doing some good things, let's do that.
Any other comments, questions from the board that might come down?
I think, we are live, so I mean, correct, so people can hear, hear this.
Should be, yeah.
That, that we, you know, we didn't raise taxes last budget, and now rubber's meeting the road, and you can't, you don't, you don't want services and stuff, but yet I hear, you know, companies about, the roads look horrible, this is horrible, you know, worried about police force, all these shortcomings, but they don't understand how, how we're gonna pay for it. Cost of living has gone up higher, so all these other things that, you know, that supplement like roads and all this other stuff, costing money, gotta pay for it somehow, so, you know, people, people need to understand this. And I've said myself, I am poor, I have to pay too, so gotta do it somehow. We can't have services and not be able to pay for them, gotta do it somehow.
I'll answer that too, because one thing we always talk about, with a tax increase, educate the people on one, what is the tax increase for, we're talking about emergency services and things of that nature, but let's break down the costs, because a lot of times, when you say tax increase, especially in the election years, like a building policy, but let's break down the amounts. The tax increase that we requested, that we ultimately did fund, the cost per citizen, per month, and the increase in your property tax, monthly, was eight dollars. So we're not talking about any forced tax increase that's gonna cripple somebody, you're paying thousands of dollars more a year. I'll say it again, it was an eight-dollar increase.
That was the average home in Hope Mills.
Per person, per house, eight dollars total. Yes.
That was on the, that was based off the, the, it was like a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house.
Well, we basically gave the amount on.
Right, we gave, we gave you three comparisons. One was the average home, one was like a three hundred fifty thousand dollar home, and then we did one on like a hundred thousand.
And so, your average house, it was a hundred and twenty-two dollars annually, that was the increase. So a lot of times, when you hear tax increase, and it's such a negative connotation, I'm simply saying, if we're talking about services, we're talking about things that we're saying, if we don't do this tax increase, we're talking about police, a study doing what we're doing right now, they asked for nine officers in the budget, we said no. How much of the problems we're dealing with now would have been dealt with with that tax increase? We started talking about how events got cut out of budget, everybody's talking about what got cut, knocked over this past year. What I said in May, when we said no to the tax increase, I said, we're gonna have to cut events, because we're gonna have the funding to pay for it. So if we're talking about the things that people want to see in the town, we have to pay for it, but the amount, we're saying, we have to educate them. We're not saying that it's gonna increase your expenses two hundred dollars a month. We're talking about a marginal increase of eight dollars a month to provide you with better police officers, to provide you with better services. So we have to educate people, we're gonna talk about doing a tax increase, it's about explaining what you're gonna get out of it, but breaking down just how much it's gonna be, because what we heard at one of our board meetings, you have people now saying, raise my taxes. Let's explain to them a little bit more in detail what they're getting out of it, but breaking down, again, it's not as much as people think, I'm not counting pockets of things of that nature, but I want to make sure that they understand, we're not talking about doing something that's gonna break the backs of our citizens. that's gonna break the backs of our citizens. It is something you have to pay for. But I think we have to find a middle ground where we, where everyone understands. Because one thing that came out of a guy that spoke in opposition to the tax increase at the last budget workshop, he made a post on social media about not wanting taxes raised. When we explained it, he thought, and he said, you know what? You're right, we're gonna have to do something. What we do and how we do it, we can't not do it and expect for those services to stay at optimum level.
Well, it seems that, you act like eight dollars a month with the, or eight dollars a year. Well, I don't think it's eight dollars a year, what is it, eight dollars a month?
A month.
But you've got to think of the other charges, that's just not your property taxes. How long are you paying thirty-four dollars in stuff then every year for recreational tax? They pay for stormwater, one of the other extra stuff that's added off to taxes that you? If it was just five cents on the?
And the reason we do that, just to go ahead and answer your question, because if we tried to build it another way, we have no teeth, and we wouldn't get the money. So we put it on their property tax bill, just like y'all perked up when Bobby said, hey, we put it on the tax bill. Hey, can we do that? Not really, because then you're getting owner of the property, not necessarily the business. But that's why we have the garbage, the stormwater, and the parks and rec on the tax bill, because now we guarantee we're gonna collect that, because we can do that.
But the homeowners have to pay for that. I, I mean, I pay it every year. I don't wanna think about it, I don't use any parks and recreation stuff. And that, that's why people look at it.
Right.
That, you know, look at this, it's thirty-four dollars for the pay there every year. And I don't do anything with parks and recreation. And here we've got stormwater we have to pay for. And, and my brains, and my yard, I think, and my front lawn, I get out there and clean them out and say, not me saying that, but you know, nobody's gonna allow it.
But you saw what stormwater needed earlier tonight. That's where that gets paid for from.
Yeah, but saying that's what I'm saying, if it was just an increase on the property.
It is, only property taxes go up.
But it's the other add-ons to it that makes your taxes go up.
Without adding?
And if you add, excuse me, if you add on that, and I figured it out, it will almost take every bit of the three-five cents, a percent that senior citizens got on their social security. And if taxes go up, and if they're renting, their rent's going up. And that means that they, they might as well not do the law now, because it, it reduces to the town.
If they're renting, they're probably not paying property tax, because they don't own the property.
Their rent will go up if it goes to home, if it goes personal tax.
One, one thing, one thing I add, and as many things you say, your services and parks and rec, these are services that we're providing. And so we're talking about the, the weather event that we had, we're talking about stormwater, we're talking about parks and rec. A lot of people say they don't use parks and rec, but they benefit. We're talking about the different events we have every year. You know, these things do have a cost. We had a trunk and treat. Then we had twenty-five-hundred people that came out to trunk and treat. It does, because we cut.
I also pay on the, the property taxes for some of that stuff.
We're just talking about services. And so what I'm getting at is, when we cut, because I think our former fire bar, fire chief said, for a while, the town of Oakdale is getting a whole lot of done. And what he means by that is, with the tax increase we didn't pay for, we cut the six thousand dollars a year we were spending on candy alone for trunk and treat. And we still hit the numbers, probably triple the amount of people that were provided those services. So we can't say that just because one or two people are certain people aren't using those services. These are services that are provided to citizens at an optimum level. And I mean even, probably at the highest level you're seeing in the county, with bare minimum that we're putting back in.
But I just tell you what these, these senior citizens are saying. Law dollars cannot even make it.
I think some of that is an education issue, too. Because we pay into the education system, and all of us don't have children, and the public school system. But that's something that we have to pay. We have not raised the taxes for ten years. And, you know, when people were hitting on us about these baseball fields, some of the money came from Arca. We could not, they were saying, we weren't paying our officers, we shouldn't use the money for that. We couldn't use that money to pay for our police officers. And when we do try to address things like this, that is an automatic economic development return back into our community. But you just cannot continue, like when we, when we talk about these people, well, we don't have a people, they can't provide the services. But, um, we have, we have not raised the taxes for ten years. The thing about us is, we live in a hopeful community with you all. I'm a homeowner as well. So when the taxes go up, I'm not putting that off on the citizen's back. I gotta pay these same taxes that we're all talking about. But I know that it's the best thing in my community. I know that I have to have this in my community, these things in my community, for my community to look better and to survive. So when we talk about balancing the budget, we have to raise taxes. As you can see, we've been getting by. We've just been barely getting by. We have not planned properly, but it's growth that we have. So when we do that, and people talk about, oh, you know, we got the lowest taxes in some of the counties. We balance the budget. We balance the budget by behind the scenes, and I hope people are looking at this tonight. Look at the stuff that you cut that you don't get when those, when, when you balance the budget, and you cut, and you're gonna get to a point where you can't cut anymore. And the increase, because we waited so long, is going to be higher. And I hate to say, I told you so, but I voted for the tax increase by myself. Um, but my job is to go along with my board members. I, I, I was the only one that voted for it, and we supposed to make it work. But I hate to say, I told you so, I don't like going to fund balance, to balance our budget. Because we, as you saw in the presentation the other night, we barely breaking even with that. We can't keep taxing it to fund balance to help us survive. That's for, to me, that's for emergency. So we shouldn't be doing it to balance the budget. But my thing is, it's just the growth we need to grow. We've just been, we've been getting by by having the taxes, by not raising the taxes, and to balance the budget. Again, I live in this community, I'm not on a fixed income, but we all have to pay these same taxes that everybody else has to pay.
I agree.
But, 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 hold on. We're just lucky, because I, we're trying to do this fairly. I wanted a complex home, we're gonna have people for it. And I said this before, and Dr. McCray hit the nail on the head. I have no children, and I'm a single woman on fixed income with retirement and disability. And I have, yes, I do, I'm on it.
I don't have it about eighteen, nineteen.
I'm thirty, no, no, I'm forty-three years old, and I'm on a fixed income. Okay, and I'm on a fixed income too. And, and that's why I didn't wanna turn this into a debate, but I have to pay County School taxes, and I definitely do not have children, I'm a single woman. Okay, and I have no, I never had children, I never gave birth. And I shouldn't have to debate this, because there is no children, I don't have to debate. But I have to pay taxes too. And I, I prepared myself in the military by, by working myself damn near to death physically, so I wouldn't have to worry about bills in the future. And now, you know, I have this as a job, my six hundred dollars a month to, to supplement. But, you know, when we cut those, a lot of the, the parks and rec things, the, um, old mill days, when we cut these, all these events that people wanted, and then they get mad, and they get pissed off at staff, and they get pissed off at the elected. What I, what is, what were the first words out of my mouth when we did raise taxes? Don't ask me for anything.
They ain't what you think.
I, you're correct, I said it a little bit differently. But don't ask me for anything, because actions take money. It takes money to do stuff in this town. Stuff is not getting cheaper, stuff is getting more expensive. And we can't, we can't, you know, we can't stay at status quo. And people are expecting that. What's cost of living increases, we cannot stay at status quo with the current money we have. It's impossible. We have to raise taxes, because otherwise, we're not gonna have any of the things that we do need. I, I don't know.
I just want to say this. I think that our police, our firemen, our dancers, our roads and streets, we need to take care of that, of those departments before we go and spend thousands of dollars on a splash table, or something else that we don't need right now.
We have to spend it on projects. We have to spend that money on projects.
Right.
The Arca money, the Arca money, and the, the, the money that came from the legislators, it has to be private. We cannot go, um...
The Arca money was supposed to go for, for police radio.
Police radio and funds. Do we all get the funds? We could not put it?
Actually, we did give them the hazard pay with the month, the first funds that we got through the county. It wasn't Arca funds, it was a...
CARES money.
The CARES money, yes. That went directly to hazard pay.
But that's one thing people have to understand. When we talk about CARES money, Arca money, those, those funds are allocated in earmarks. And so we can't just take that money and put it towards things that some people consider risky.
Now, the Arca funds, just to correct Ken Wannaright quick, we could use that for police and public safety salaries, but we elected not to, because we wanted to use it specifically for projects, things that would be lasting. If you use the Arca money for salaries, it's gone. It's an expense. There's no tangible asset that we use that. So we made a committee, and we decided we're gonna use this money for projects. It was voted by, it was recommended by staff or that committee, and it was voted by the council. So once we did that, we're not using it for salaries.
And I will say again, with the tax requests that we asked for, police salaries and positions were in that request for the tax increase. And we said no.
Do we still have that one, four million dollars left aside for a baseball field?
It's not. It's for the ball field project at Golfie.
But it's still there, we haven't spent.
We haven't spent all of it, no. Lamarcus is gonna talk about that in his presentation.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we could have used that money when the police department wanted their wages, they needed it. That money could have gone to help them get.
Right, we could have, but you know what? Once you do that for this budget year, it's gone. We can't use it for next budget year. It's a one and done. If we raise their salaries, that's ongoing, every budget year after this. So if we raise their salaries, we pay this year with Arca money, how are we paying for that next year? Arca money's gone, we just spent it.
We're gonna be annexing and building it. And you look at the, um, at the, that Mary town right down there, that's over ten million dollars that we're gonna be getting tax money in a office that just that one building. If we're gonna be annexing and bringing in more, more revenue with tax dollars, then we ought to be able to, to have the money to keep the towers and all going, and what our departments that we have to have operate.
A ten-million-dollar building gives us forty-six thousand dollars in revenue.
Well, that's only six thousand dollars.
And that doesn't even cover the salary of one police officer.
And Drew, I will add, could you, could you explain the rebound every eight years, and how that applies to revenue coming in? Because I think that's education piece, just because we have, I think we have the Liberty Point Development. How many millions of dollars was that invested? We're still not getting the revenue on that, because we can't get that revenue until the rebound.
Right, two thousand and eighteen.
I just think we're streaming money for things that we do not need to, that we could wait until that. It's obvious that this board is gonna vote for, for taxes for it. That's obvious, I don't know why they don't believe in that. But I think that if we would budget our money better and stop wasting money, and I see it all the time. Then we could do better.
Okay, all right. Drew, I think we're done, let's move on to public works.
Our public works wants to take five, I will say next to, maybe take five.
I think mine would be true. Everything that was, everyone would agree.
Well, yeah, we take five. We take five, we're going.
Did I say anything wrong?
Take five, take five. Okay, and then quick five, I mean, it's almost nine.
Yeah.
It's almost nine. Let's, uh, let's reach the beam at nine. Okay? Okay, at nine. Give them a big one.
I don't think we can close any more.
I don't have water. The chairman, the chairman, I was assuming this building. I put it behind me.
Oh, if you were asking for something, you got to.
No, no.
Four day week.
I don't know. I don't know. I don't even know your president. That's what I said, I was saying.
He's gonna hit a wall.
All good, guys? We're good, I'm good.
Fast, fast, fast. We're good. All right, Drew Moore, Drew Moore to go.
Sir. Okay, I can do that. Next slide is the key. Yeah, I know it's... But it's easier to stand here and say next slide. Next slide.
All right. To put things in perspective, I want to piggyback on one thing that Fire Chief had mentioned and that had to do with the equipment.
All right. We got the, uh, Public Works Department coming up now.
Yeah. I want to piggyback on one thing that the Fire Chief had mentioned, just so that, that's an example for y'all to understand what we as a town are up against to have specialized vehicles. We had our street sweeper in, in the shop and it took more than six months for us to get a part, put back together and put back on the street. And that was with a twelve thousand dollar bill. Um, every year, it, it costs more than ten thousand dollars just to do the annual maintenance per vehicle. And we have two street sweepers. And every year, that street sweeper has to go to Charlotte to be serviced. So we spend a lot of time and money down when we have a vehicle, uh, equipment out and people on the road just getting them there. Um, when we talk about time, we have over eight hundred rooftops, residential rooftops in the books um, between Dirtbag L's and Sand Hills Road. Eight hundred. Imagine how much, you don't have to imagine, you know. How long does it take to get, if you go out parking lot here, just to get there? And we have to send trash trucks, knucklebooms and everything out that way every day. And then they have to turn around and go to Georgetown. And then they have to turn around and go across over John Smith Road. Um, we cover over eighty-two miles of road in this town. And our department travels every foot of it, every week, with multiple routes. Um, so time is, is one thing that we, we, we have a very difficult time quantifying, but it is a reality for all of our departments because we have to get there before we can do something. And then we have to get back. And then you got to go, for us, we have to go to the landfill and sit in line sometimes for over an hour at the landfill, just so we can get done and come back and do things. Um, we talk about, we've talked about fees and how much people are paying for trash. Our trash service, our trash fees that this, the, the folks in this town pay is two hundred and ninety dollars a year. That two hundred and ninety dollars a year pales to the three hundred and thirty-six dollars a year Bruce pays privately. Bruce gets his trash picked up twice a week. We do once a week trash. He doesn't do recycling. We do recycling. He doesn't do yard waste. We do yard waste. He doesn't do bulk pickups, things like furniture and stuff like that. We do all of that for our residents for fifty-six dollars a year less per household. You know, and we, and I'll say it like this, we do our damnedest to keep our fees as low as we possibly can. But we still have to pay tipping at the county landfill and we still have to pay gas, put it on our trucks to get wherever it is we're going to service every area in this town. Um, I gave you two handouts. Uh, one is just a single one that I gave to the mayor that's got a bunch of pictures of the Woodland Hills that I'd just like to share so you have an idea of what that stormwater system looks like. Um, because we're going to discuss it. And the other one is, I just gave you a couple of pages because I made extra notes so that you have my notes. Um, where we are, um, one of the commissioners had asked about the ARPA funds and stuff like that. So I wanted to let you all know where we have all of this funding that we got and where it's sitting right now so that you know that we're not wasting it for taxpayers' money. We are actively pursuing the projects for it, but these things take time. We have got projects in engineering, that's in engineering for over a year now because it takes things like geotechnical boring. And we have to get a specialty folks to go in and do surveys, the creek bottom surveys for East Patterson Street. And that's not something that you can just call anybody and they'll come in here next week and do it. It's very specialized and it takes a lot of time just to do the prep work before the first shovel is turned. Um, we have got, and I, and I broke it down, like Woodland Hills is one of our SCIF projects that, that, um, we still have six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars available for it. Our latest engineer estimate for that project is one point nine eight million dollars. That is a system that is going to imminently fail sooner than later. That's why I gave you those pictures. The storm system is starting to collapse in areas. When that collapses, the road collapses. And then we've got big problems. East Patterson Street, that embankment, um, a couple of years ago when we had the engineer out there, when we did the estimate, we asked for, we got two and a half million dollars. It's been engineering ever since then um, because of all of the survey work, different types of survey work that have to be done. Um, the latest estimate is going to be about three and a quarter to three and a half million dollars. That's all SCIF funds. So we're, we've got a shortfall there. The creek clearing we asked for, we got five hundred thousand dollars. That is complete. And we have a two hundred and seven thousand dollar surplus. So that's money that we're going to bump over, probably over onto the East Patterson Street, um, project so that we've got some funds for it. And then the ARPA funding, uh, we've got two point three million dollars left out of it. But before I go into that, I want you to know that with that ARPA funding right now, to this, to date, we have done, uh, a rehab on the municipal parking lot out there on the corner of Trade Street and Main Street where the bank is at. We did that rehab for that so we can extend the life of it. Escapade Drive up in Meadowbrook, we did a full depth replacement of that entire block. Um, Thoroughbred out in Steeplechase, there is about two hundred and fifty linear feet, give or take that. We not only had to do full depth replacement, but that street was literally erupting because of stormwater getting through and breaking through the asphalt. So we, and I mean, we, we don't have a PE on staff, but we engineered a drainage system for it, took that street up, did a full depth replacement with a drainage system. And for the last two years now, we've had a six inch rainfall just a few weeks ago and we've not had issues with it. So, so far, we've been successful with it. Um, stormwater, Ms. Elizabeth's not here. We've got three hundred thousand dollars that's kind of in limbo with DEQ. Um, she's having a very hard time getting that funding from there. And that's been earmarked to help out with all the stuff out in, in Woodland Hills. Um, so with that said, our balance available is five point nine million dollars and our estimated cost is five point two million dollars. And before we jump up and down and, and say that, that's great for that seven hundred thousand dollars, everybody knows how much stuff is escalating and we're hoping that we have enough to cover it. The next line down, Pringle Way, this is where the, um, the monkey wrench gets thrown into everything. Pringle Way is the worst street in town. Rated thirty-five on the scale. Um, we had it engineered. We put it out for bid twice. Nobody bid on it. Um, the engineer's estimate was about six hundred and eighty thousand, give or take. Um, talking to different vendors and stuff, we're going to go back and, and relook at it. And, and this is going to be a decision for y'all to make. Um, because they're looking at possibly having to extend the time for it because it's in the neighborhood and trying to do it over the summer months when school's out. Um, and they're looking at, at rather than being closer to seven hundred thousand dollars, more like a million dollar project if we can get somebody to bid on it. But it's been out twice with not the, not the first taker. So we want to try to re-energize that. And I'm going to skip a whole bunch of stuff and just say that on today's briefing that we had with the folks from the League of Municipalities for the grants, um, we, we think that that might be something that they can be pushed quickly. Um, it's shovel ready, that if we can get a grant upfront where with a, with a quickness for a million dollars, give or take, um, we might be able to make that happen. Uh, the problem with Pringle Way is there's, there's no stormwater on the street other than two boxes at the bottom of about an eight hundred and sixty foot incline. So it's very similar to, uh, golly, the street in your neighborhood, Mayor, that same way. They had ru, uh, stormwater come in and jump in the curb because they're at the very bottom. We had to redo it. Lily in place. Lily in place. Um, same thing. But the, and the problem that we have there also is that there's wetlands behind there. So there's a lot of erosion in the wetlands. In order to do all the repairs though, we have to move water and sewer lines. So it, it's not just a matter of putting in a box and piping it down into the, the wood line. We've got to change everything there. And it's going to affect all the, all the residents' lives because we're going to be tearing up driveways and stuff like that. You know, so we've got that going on. Okay. Next slide please. For departmental capital and personnel, um, we're looking at a facilities maintenance technician. Somebody that has got some trade skills and we need that because of exactly where you are sitting. The warranty on this building for most of this stuff is up. Tomorrow, we're supposed to do a walkthrough. A couple more months, the electrical and mechanical warranty is going to be up. And we have to maintain this building. Um, there is a lot of technical features to this building that need to be looked at. And, and we're going to need somebody that can talk smart about that. So we're going to look at adding a, um, maintenance tech person to this building. Elizabeth's not here. We're going to ask for a trash truck this year to replace the, an old rear loader. Um, our oldest one is a two thousand and ten model. Uh, fourteen years old. The life expectancy of a truck like that is seven years. Um, we've been milking it. We've had to replace hydraulics on it. And it is going to, in the near future, become a maintenance cumbersome burden to this town. Um, service garage truck, I know the mayor, you had talked about replacing the older ones. We have nineteen ninety-six model truck. Um, it, it's time to replace it. It actually, it's, it's past time to replace it. Mosquito machines, we've got three mosquito machines. And I suspect that y'all couldn't take the heat if you wanted to eliminate the mosquito program. Because we, everybody knows that we're an island if it floods. Um, and just giving an example, we've got seven bridges in town. We don't maintain all seven, but we have seven bridges in town, which is an indicator of how much water and how much standing water we have. So, um, I believe that's, that's a program we probably want to keep up. They're not extremely expensive. It runs about thirty-six thousand dollars for two new machines. And we've got a third one that's still in good shape. But the mosquito machines we have are nineteen ninety-eight models. Um, new positions. For, we want to do a crew leader for the streets division. And I prefaced where I started my presentation with how long it takes to get everywhere. Um, we've got one street supervisor and then everybody else works on crew. And it's nothing to have a, a couple of crews in different areas. And the geography is such that it's, it's becoming imperative. We talked about the growth of the town, that we grow the staff, that we have somebody that can be responsible for whatever maintenance is going on in different areas and not just in one. Um, we can't have a supervisor covering that much area. It's just not possible to cover that much area in a day's time or with, with whatever may happen to be going on. Um, and also what we're going to do is, we're not going to do it right now, um, but we're going to develop crew leaders for the other areas to sanitation. The sanitation runs the same areas and then buildings and grounds because we've got this. We're talking about doing, um, something else with the town hall. And I'm going to get into something else that'll, a little bit, in a minute, that'll get more into that. Okay. Next slide please. The operational requirements that we've identified for this year, and these are just not personnel related, but the town hall lights, uh, the last time we had to change a light bulb in the town hall and those are the, the flying saucer looking lights. We couldn't get one. And we used the last one we had on the shelf. There is no bench stock anyplace. We have to replace those lights because we'll just start running out. And while we're doing that, we also want to go in and all the can lights that are in there, go back and replace them with LED lighting. Um, it'll cost us a little bit upfront, but the energy savings in the long run will make up for it. But the, the flying saucers have got to be replaced or else we're just not going to have lights in the building. Um, we're going to need a rotary wheel balancer and this is going to help the police department. Um, we're going to need bridge repairs. This year, this month, we have DOT's engineers out inspecting our bridges. And we have been getting, since I've been here in the last ten years, we've not needed to do any maintenance, but the reports are coming back that our grades are coming, coming from, we were in nines, eights, sevens, and now we're getting to, into the six and seven grading, that we, we really need to look at doing some repairs on the bridges. So what I propose that we do then is, once we get the bridge reports back, hire a smart engineer on bridges so that they can develop a work plan for it and help us with, um, the contracts so we get the right people in and do the bridge one, you know, do our bridges one time and we won't have to address them, um, for several years again. Asphalt reclaiming trailer, the one we have is golly over thirty years old. We've had to replace piping, cylinders, burners on it. It's starting to rust out in the body. Um, it's, at thirty years, it's, it's had its, its usable life. And then the drainage system on the dam, we've been putting off. It's probably about another twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars. On the right abutment, there is a spring that is more active at some points in, in time than it is in others. A couple of years ago, it was very active and the toe of the right abutment was very spongy. Not to the point that we were concerned, we were going to have a dam failure, but it was very spongy. We didn't have, um, any indicators that gave us cause for concern. But we do have a, it, it's not a fix. We can't stop the spring. But we do have, um, a drainage system that goes along the wall and comes out that we can run a drain from the abutment wall, um, to the sidewall and then out into the creek. Um, so we, we'd like to look at doing that as well. Okay. Capital and future years planning, property acquisition. Um, y'all may not realize that the fact of our yard, from the back of our building, where the water tower is, there's three buildings back there. It does not belong to the town. PWC Fayetteville owns that. They own those buildings. We pay rent on those buildings, I believe. Um, they used to use them up until about ten years ago for, uh, equipment and spoils and material storage. Um, they can, and you know, the, the hard truth is, they can at any time say, I need my building because Fayetteville's growing and I've got to be able to store material. So we have had an initial meeting, a concept meeting with some of the folks at, at PWC just to see if they would gather some interest and they believe that, um, would, yeah, it, they'd be at least interested to open up the discussion. What we're looking at doing... What we're looking at doing is on East Cole Street, we own two properties on East Cole Street that go across the string. We own both sides of Little Rockfish Creek. They have an aerial crossing there at fourteen feet, that they have an interest in owning that property so they can maintain that. And then the sewer line there is very shallow. So it would, it's to their benefit to own that property so they can maintain the sewer system. It's to our benefit to have the back of our yard so that we have it. What we're looking at proposing is cutting out the water tower. It's already fenced in and providing access easement, you know, so they get through the gates. There's a generator along one of the fences, so we'd have to do an easement there as well. You know, and that way, we would own our yard and not have to worry about essentially getting kicked out and having to find someplace to put all of our equipment. We're looking at doing a wash pad with an oil-water separator. Right now, what we have is not D E Q compliant with the current laws. And I know the fire department takes care of their stuff up here, but a lot of the departments, the smaller vehicles would go through our yard and use the wash rack and the wash pad area so that they could clean their vehicles. And right now, we just don't have that capability because it's not compliant. For capital and future years planning, let's see, also, we've got the government complex master plan. And that's where Chancellor was saying, we realize that town hall is being outgrown by staff. We're going to have to expand. But when we do that, rather than just looking at town hall, I know for public works, we need to expand as well. Our yard is full. We are, we're gathering equipment. Every year, we're trying to develop redundant systems so that we don't stop services to anybody in the town, but it takes space. Part of the master plan, if we did that, you know, would be, what do we do with Lamarcos stuff? Because Lamarcos needs a lot of space for his equipment as well. We need the office space for the administrative staff. And we need the space for the maintenance folks, both us and Parks and Rec. And then it's on the CIP as a multi-story storage building for us. Grant funding items. Paving survey project, Pringle Way is number one on our list. If we can get that grant funded so that we can get that street up to a halfway decent standard, I said, that is the worst street in town. Other areas up to additional grant funding. The last page that you have on that little handout I gave you is the project list that we developed for ARPA funding that we were gonna go back, do some milling, fill some patching, some asphalt work, that we just can't do it. We estimated it off the 2019 paving survey to be about nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The engineer's estimate came in at one point four million, and that was last year. And we haven't done any, well, I'm saying, we've done the ones that I had mentioned earlier, but the rest of it, we're not doing because my concern is making sure that we have enough funds to take care of East Patterson Embankment. Because what we're looking at is, where is our worst situation if we have failure? And if that bank fails, we lose the road, we lose the houses. And we don't wanna do that. You know, and then the same thing up in Woodland Hills. If we lose the stormwater system, we lose the road. And we don't wanna do that. And then Pringle Way is our next one because it's the worst road. We also wanna add part of that as rejuvenation of the newer subdivision roads. Now, we had briefed many years ago that good roads are easier and cheaper to maintain. And part of that is rejuvenating the existing asphalt. UV radiation is a very, is very detrimental to asphalt. And we just can't get away from it. And you get ravelling. You've probably walked on some of the older roads where it seems like there's no asphalt. There's just pebbles that are stuck in some kind of goo. If we get into these roads in time and we can rejuvenate those asphalt coatings, then it'll take more years to get to that point. Another thing that I would like to do, and this was a funding or a grant project a couple of years ago, I don't know if it's still in existence. And we're asking the folks at the League of Municipalities, is the bridge over the flume. We own two bridges, the one over the creek and the very next one over the flume. The bridge over the flume serves no purpose whatsoever. It can never be used again because the forbay for the dam has to be closed off. It's a safety feature on the dam. So with that said, there's absolutely no need to have and maintain a bridge. So if we can get a grant to have that taken up, filled in, run the road back over it, that's one less we have to pay for for inspection and maintenance and one less that can possibly fail on us. Another one that we'd like to do, and this is on your handout, is the main street sidewalk. Y'all know that we're doing the multi-use path at the lake. This is the other side of the street. You know, during the peak season, a lot of people park over there and they have to get to the lake. What we've looked at doing is running a sidewalk up and down that block right there. And we were looking at doing a FAMPO agreed, and it was like a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant. When we went back and walked that area and started looking at it, there is extensive underground utilities there that's going to have to be moved. There's probably going to be some right-of-way issues because it's a DOT highway. And there may even be some property acquisition needs to be done. With the folks that do the grants that we had talked about this morning, if they, if they could get a grant for that project, they would do the pre-engineering for it so we'd know what kind of funding. And they could actually get the engineering and the funding for it and the administration of it, you know, by the end of the period of the League of Municipalities marching orders, so to speak. And then last on that is ADA transition. You know, that is something that's been ongoing now for about the past five years. We're at a point now where we're looking at access ramps along the sidewalks. And we've got a ton of them that need done. And it's gonna take a ton of money to do that. So if we can get that, you know, if y'all want us to go and try to get that under the grants program as well. And then last, well, before I do the discussion on the dam, I just wondered for an information on y'all. The dam is developing voids on the walls. It's not threatening right now, but this spring, when we do the inspection, when Snawba comes down, they've asked, and we've proposed to them is, we're gonna lower the dam a second time this year. It's not going to be as much. Usually, we lower it three to four feet. Now, we're looking at six to twelve inches in the spring just so that we can get down there comfortably, clean off a section of the wall, pressure wash it, prep it. And they recommended a specific type of grout that we can go and skim coat this grout and then let the dam raise back up. And then when we lower it next year, come back and do an inspection and see how that skim coat is wearing on the wall. I mean, they're still looking at, you know, a hundred and fifty years, give or take, on that dam to last. But if we can, if that skim coat works and we can get two hundred and fifty years out of the dam, you know, better for us. And the last thing I've got on here, and as a discussion item, brought it up last year. This year, I put the numbers to it just so y'all know. You know, we take care of the cemeteries. And we take care of the families that need cemetery services, both as a pre-planning. And we have the bad fortune of dealing with people that have, you know, lost somebody unexpectedly. So we're dealing with them at the worst times of their lives, you know, and finding plots. Well, we only have about four hundred and twenty-seven plots left in our two cemeteries. So if we wanna keep providing that service to our residents, you know, it would be time to start looking for a piece of land and getting it ready so that we can continue that, if not, or else we just stop providing the service. Because we've run out of space, literally. And when I tell you the four hundred and twenty, and I'll tell you that is four hundred and twenty, hopefully, because we have dug up bones and unmarked graves. So there's no guarantees. And I believe that's all I have. Discussion.
Where is the bridge over the flume?
You know where the wheel is at? Well, that's where the flume is at. The bridge, that part of the road is actually a bridge. Yes, ma'am.
Finally, we have parks.
Like everybody else, I have supplemental. A couple of them for work. And anybody else. Everybody here. Okay. So while he's doing that, had a whole speech and everything, but I'm gonna abbreviate it because I'm tired and I'm quite sure everybody else is tired, right? But I would like to give my commentary first about the importance of parks and recreation because, you know, when, I've lived in three municipalities. And whenever there's a tough budget year or shortcomings, the first place everybody wants to look is parks and recreation. And then they assume that it's icing on the cake. But I will tell you this, and it's been done in studies, when individuals look for a house or area to live in, along with schools and safety, people are looking for leisure and parks and recreation because you have things like senior programs, you have youth athletics, things of that nature. So parks and recreation rank right up there with everything else. And Holt Mills is proof of that because in the four years I've been here, we've seen thirty percent growth in all demographics. That's, you know, from youth athletics, adult athletics, and also seniors. We're busting at the seam as far as senior programs. And so I just wanted to say that because, again, people think parks and recreation is icing on the cake. And when you think parks and recreation, it's not just athletics, you know. And I hear some people say, we don't even use parks and recreation. But, you know, if you rent one of our facilities, that's parks and recreation, that's reservation. If you enjoy Fourth of July, Christmas, Easter, any of those type of things, you know, that's parks and recreation. Even though we're not doing Old Mill Days this year, we are supplementing and partnering with Debbie Jones and the Police Association. So that's parks and recreation. So parks and recreation encompasses a whole bunch of things. If you walk the trail, that's parks and recreation. So I just wanted to throw that out there before I went into my spiel about our priorities. The second thing I wanna say is, if you notice, there's nothing operational in my presentation because we're pretty efficient and we feel like we can, we can do everything operational-wise with the budget that we get each year. So I'm not asking for vehicles, I'm not asking for staff. However, with the, as somebody else alluded to it, with the addition of facilities, you know, there is a three to twelve percent increase in operation because you're gonna need staff to, you know, man these facilities and you're gonna need maintenance materials, you're gonna need maintenance people. So I just wanna throw that out there. So with that, the first project you have there is inclusive playground. If you all would recall at the ribbon cutting, you know, a lot of people voiced their concerns that, you know, you didn't have things like shade. You didn't have shade structures, you didn't have picnic tables, you didn't have benches. And so we realized that. And there was already always a plan to bring in a phase two. And so the first graphic you have there is an actual inclusive playground I did in Greenville. And so, of course, our playground won't look like this, but Phase Two will bring in some of the amenities to go along with the playground to completely finish that project. And those are things like a wheelchair swing for, for people that might be confined to a wheelchair. And that is a specialty-type amenity that is available, but it's a proprietary product that we would have to order and have shipped from Germany. But it is an amenity and we have got requests for it. So that's one amenity. A large picnic area and picnic shelter, benches and shade trees. And so with all of those amenities, that will complete our inclusive playground to make it more than just a playground, but an experience. Let me go back because one of the other things we were tasked to do was to look at grants funding. We have identified some partners in this project. So we've approached Lowe's and they've expressed an interest in doing the shelter for us and providing landscaping. So we are ongoing with conversations. With that, we're also looking at, you know, the donations of landscaping. We've had some citizens say they'd be willing to donate landscaping. So we are looking at some of our partners like Cardinal and some of the folks that we've done business with through the years to, that might wanna partner with us or match our funding. And so with some of these partners and grant funding we're looking at, you know, the city's portion, the town's portion is approximately ninety-one thousand dollars. So that one hundred and eighty thousand dollar ask, if everything works out, it won't totally be on the town's back to come up with the budget. Those are some things we can look at as far as grants and things of that nature.
Lamarcos, I'm gonna pause you there. The one eighty that you're showing on this slide, that's what you're proposing to finish Phase Two?
Yes, sir.
And that's without any, anything out of that second box?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything we can get out of that second box up there, that would less than the one hundred and eighty thousand?
Absolutely.
Got you. Just clarification.
Next is the tennis court improvements and pickleball expansion. So we put the tennis courts in the CIP every year and it's been cut. It's one of those projects where, you know, like Drew said, we wanna do everything but we can't. But I get calls every week about tennis court. Kind of breaks my heart to walk by and see people playing on the court. Several boys and potholes in the surface, which really makes it not safe for people ADA or disabilities. And so it's one of those projects that if we don't do something about it, it's one of those assets that we could stand loose and would have to close because it's not safe. And, you know, I will say in another year or so, two years, it's gonna be beyond repair to the point where we're gonna have to rip out the whole surface and then come in with new pavement and everything. So I think right now, having, we've had it evaluated by a couple of vendors. And so it's in a state now that we can go back in and resurface it. And what we're proposing now, because pickleball has grown about fifty percent at the rec center, there is a way that we can get two uses out of tennis courts once we resurface it. We can resurface a two tennis court, but then we could also get four pickleball courts out of that amenity as well. So my proposal here is to resurface the existing tennis court, new nets, sports field lighting, I mean, sports lighting. But in addition to that, and the quote includes also lining the tennis court for four pickleball courts. And so, and we are looking at grant funding for that. Specifically, I mentioned that today with the grants lady. There are grants for senior programming, sports-type grants. And then there's also land water conservation. And I've been looking at land water conservation. So those are like three areas that we can look for grant funding for. Of course, the town would have to do either a fifty percent or a thirty percent match for that.
Lamarcos?
Yes, sir.
Phase Two, slide before this, Phase Two eligible for the grant lady?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Yep.
All right, you're due for two.
All right. Y'all laughing at me?
No, it's not like that.
Sounds like you're doing good one.
Yeah.
I was doing good, but see now I'm about to talk about ARPA funding and re, and reallocating it. So that's going to, might get me in trouble a little bit. Um, but, um, another growing need is, um, and, and we've, we've, we've heard the request for a senior center. And so, um, if you would recall, the master plan, you have a graphic there, the master plan did call for a rec center. Um, in the past, I've done a senior center that also doubled as a rec center to expand youth athletics. But then also, um, what you all probably don't know is we have a growing need in Hope Mills for special populations. Um, right now, we have people with special needs that visit a rec center, but we don't have specialized people to, um, address that. We don't have the staff and, um, if you all didn't know, so special population requires a, um, a specialized person. They call it, it used to be special possible, now they call it therapeutic recreation. So, um, we would either need to bring in a part-time person, a contract person, or hopefully a full-time person. Because, um, I'm amazed at just how much of a need there is for special population. And not just pop, special populations, but to deal with disabled veterans and disabled people. And so this proposed fifteen thousand square foot building would provide us adequate space for, um, and expand our programming for seniors. It would also help us expand, um, our ever-growing basketball program, indoor soccer, and our youth athletics. But it would also, um, adequately let us address the growing needs for our special population. Um, I found here recently that, um, I don't know what's going on with Federal Parks and Recreation, but they've actually, um, shut down some of its facilities. And so we're beginning to get some people, um, from Fayetteville to come to our rec center. Um, and then along with that, um, we, we have a lot of spillover from Fayetteville, Cumberland in general. Um, you know, participating in our youth athletics and, um, our senior program is fifty-fifty. For, um, for every one person that's a resident of Hope Mills, there's somebody from, um, Cumberland County that uses our facilities. And, um, if you all would recall, fifty-five and older is free. So we have a lot of people, a lot of seniors bypassing programs in Fayetteville to come play pickleball at Parks and Recreation, Zumba, um, um, line dance, etc., at Parks and Recreation. So, um, we're continuing to grow. Um, we, we, we have, um, on any given day, we have twelve people on our waiting list from senior programs because they feel, they feel, you know, pretty quickly. Um, so what I'm proposing for this project, it's, it's a six million dollar project, including infrastructure and the rec center. This is one of those big projects that I'm proposing that, um, we go after the, um, the, um, state fund. And, and looking, and looking at some of the things that were awarded last year, um, I thought we were being greeted by asking for the two hundred and forty thousand dollars. I saw municipalities and I can't recall the municipality, but, um, around Laurinburg somewhere, they received eight million dollars for a YMCA slash senior center. So I know there's state funding that can go towards a facility like that. So my proposal is to, um, spend a portion of the ARPA funding for, um, architectural services so that we have a shovel-ready project, but then go after grant funding for, um, for the construction. Um, a lot of time, these grants, if you spend the money for the design, planning, and, um, construction documents, you can count that as your match. So that would actually be part of our match for the five million dollars. So, um, that's potential funding for this project. Um, we intend to wrap up the Heritage Park project. And quite often, if you complete a Par-Tep project, you become very, very attracted to go after another Par-Tep grant. And so that's another possibility. And having a shovel-ready project makes that, um, more attractive. So, um, so that's the plan for, um, the ARPA funding. You know, shift the focus from, for the time being, from a sports complex, um, and, and, um, redirect that towards the, um, senior building. It's not totally, um, outside the scope of the project because here again, um, when the civil engineer did the, um, schematic for the sports complex, the parking lot is not only for the sports complex, but shared for the sports, um, for the recreation center. And so we can still use a portion of that plan, but then, um, as far as site work and utilities. But then, um, concentrate on the architecture portion of the job. And our intent is to, um, you know, come back later on and the, the sports complex, we part of the bond conversation. Is, is, is what our, what our intent and our idea is for, um, the rest of our performance.
Lamarcus, location. We're going to put this on the golf course in the same place as the, uh, proposed sports center?
In the general location, so, um, you all have the footprint there. So, uh, that proposed building was between a fifteen and eighteen thousand square foot. We're not doing aquatic center now, not unless you all tell me that's something you guys want. But, you know, that's ample room, about two acres, uh, two to four acres, um, is adequate for the, um, rec center. Fifteen thousand square foot to include, um, uh, such amenities as a shared gymnasium, um, um, multipurpose classrooms, uh, community room and kitchen, computer lab, group exercise, um, office space. But, um, also, um, we need to replace the, the, um, the maintenance building there. So this proposal would also, um, give us a brand-new maintenance building that will service the golf course and also store all of our equipment, like gators and things of that nature.
Lamarcus, this, uh, this, this six-two, six million, does this include replacing that maintenance building?
It does.
Okay.
It does.
In the same location?
Um, no, we'd have to move that and Chance is going to talk about that later because I'm not, I'm not touching that one. We, we're going to tag team this one. Um, so, um, something I wanted to make you all aware of, and I didn't want to, it's not sliding up to this one. Um, I, I, I didn't want to, um, have you all wait till Monday to let you know this. So we did get responsible bids in for, um, for, um, Heritage Park Phase One construction. So if you look at, if you look at, um, there's a, there's a graphic there of Heritage Park in your packet I, I passed out. But the second page breaks down, um, what the budget was, is for Heritage Park, what we spent, and, and it shows our, our shortfall. And so, um, we did receive, we received three bids, but the lowest, the low bid was, um, um, a little over one point two million dollars. Um, and that was the base bid and the alternate. The alternate was to take the existing floodgates and, uh, transform those into shelters. Um, you know, some might say, well, why did you accept the alternate? Because the alternate and all the elements that's part of that graphic there is required for the Par-Tep grant. So, um, we've accepted the money, we've accepted three grants at this point. So we're kind of obligated to finish the project out or ask for an extension. Um, including the funding that the town approved and then the, um, the grants that we received, that's Par-Tep, DWQ, and then, um, the grant from Senator Rousers' office. Um, we got one point, um, one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Um, expenditures to date, and that's also part of the project, what we call soft costs. Um, we had to pay the engineers to do the construction documents. Um, you all remember, we had to do the archaeology, uh, archaeological data recovery to make sure there was no artifacts there before we started digging. Um, you know, that was forty-five thousand dollars. Um, I think we were smart enough before design costs got crazy. We did a design bill purchase of the restroom building. So we paid for that, we got the materials for it, that's going to be part of the project. And, um, we had to pay over forty-five thousand dollars for, um, a PWC permit and water connection fee. So we've actually spent a hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars out of that one point. Um, um, one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. So, um, those are soft costs that we had to spend, um, um, out, out of the project fund. So, um, there's actually a project deficit if we're going to do the entire project based on the low bid of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um, but in addition to that, you know, I don't feel comfortable going into a project without having a construction contingency. Once you start digging for footing, you find unsuitable soils, et cetera. And so, um, though we might not and probably won't use all of the, um, contingency funds, it's just really smart business to have a contingency fund. So what staff is proposing and what we're going to ask for on Monday is the reallocation of four hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and three dollars from the ARPA funds to complete the Heritage Park project. And, um, my rationale for that is, you know, even though the golf course and the sports complex is, is a nice project, I think we get a lot of bang for our buck, um, actually finishing out a project completely. You know, finishing what we have in the books and then moving on to the next, you know, the next thing as far as design, um, of a, of the senior center. So, um, with that, if you have any questions before Chance to go into his part of the presentation, I'd be glad to be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board? You know what's coming to us on Monday night? Okay. It looks like we have an opportunity to finish a project.
So, so if you can, Mr. Wood, uh, if this is coming us Monday night, this hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars for contingency, does that have to be, like, put out there because if you put a contingency out of the middle seat, they're going to get a check?
I always tell contractors, that's my, well, it's my contingency and they got to prove that they actually need it. And then that's also always better by the engineer, so.
How long is time of a process if you don't know how much you got? I don't know what you're allocating, you're going to get it through a changeover?
I have to tell them what it is, but we're doing a ten percent contingency, that's not standing.
Anything else? Okay, Ken.
I want the next slide to split yourself.
Say it again.
Advance the slide.
He won't let me.
Terrible.
I, I am. That's why I asked you to pull. It won't advance.
What you do?
Then how is it time to quit?
We're bored out.
Come take a look at it, I tried. I might have made a bad bit of a pitch, I'm sorry. Yep.
Okay, all right.
Need the woman to.
All right, uh, the next thing on the agenda is an easement agreement. Um, the background is that, uh, we called in the par court group, uh, back in November twenty-twenty-two, um, the time of due to the development of three hundred, um, apartment complex, um, apartments on the site that is adjacent to, um, there's two sites over from our golf course. Uh, this is the project that was also tied to the Cranton Road closure. And since that time, we've had, uh, they call it GMR Capital. And we've had, uh, since the conversations regarding the entrance of that property being shared with the entrance that we were proposing for the development of the golf view. Uh, there have been several proposals, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we were talking about a three-way split cost share for the entrance. Um, but as the town, nothing, nothing really materialized. But as the town recently made progress with the designer, phase one of the master plan, conversations have been reignited. And they are requesting an easement off of the roadway that we're proposing, um, as our second entrance off of golf view. We'll have to map up in a second to show you what we're talking about. In terms of current activity, GMR Capital is in current negotiations to purchase and rear twenty-four acres, um, behind Mr. Beatty George's property, which is the property that is between their property and the golf course. You'll see a map that I'm going to show in a second. Part of that deal that they are tipping the clothes on with Mr. George includes a request for an easement off of the roadway we're putting in. Um, typically, um, we had concerns with their request because that roadway we're putting in does contemplate the demolition of our maintenance building. But this was basically being, and I think Mayor Bearbros brought it up, we anticipated our maintenance building being demolished, but during the timetable of our construction, they're having a more aggressive approach to the development of their apartments. So ultimately, if we grant them that easement to put in the, the roadway and share the cost, it would require us to demolish our, um, maintenance system before we're ready, just not ready to start using it. So that's what our issues were with even, uh, having conversations about an easement. So they are, they requested their, or they amended their request to ask for a temporary construction easement that will go around the maintenance building until it's necessary to install a permanent road off of golf view. Um, with the proposed roadway tied to the current phase of our master plan, um, they are basically saying that they'd be ready to, uh, if the town is not ready to install a permanent roadway when we are ready, then they would like to revisit, uh, ability to compensate the town for the demolition of it, um, at that time. So what you have here is an outline that shows where their property is. At the bottom right, the bottom left, which you see highlighted in yellow, that's their property. Mr. George's property is right beside theirs, and our golf course is to the far left. A blow-up is showing you not only where their property is, Mr. George's property, but that gray area is the half-stemmed proposed easement roadway that we would be putting in, um, or that would, they would be sharing with us. Um, another blow-up is showing you ultimately, the land sale there going with Mr. George, which is nothing to do with us, would result in the red area being the four acres that Mr. George would have remaining. They would be purchasing the, the area in the yellow to combine with their piece. And then we would, our property would be affected. But that area pointed, uh, in the white, um, arrow, that would be the shared entrance that they would be sharing with us. And so this is something they, uh, continue to ask us to present to the board. Uh, this is not a decision I have the approval to make. Uh, this is a request for an easement, this is not a land sale, this is not a exchange of money. Um, ultimately, um, for the construction, for the construction of the roadway, we would probably have a conversation with them about cost share at that time. But the current request is for a temporary construction easement so that they can start construction on their, um, particular apartment complex along the roadway that we are contemplating putting in. I don't know, we just had a conversation about the, uh, shifting focus from the baseball, uh, field. With this concept, see for the baseball field, that's when we were aggressively talking about that roadway being put in. If we shift the focus to the, uh, construction of a senior facility, I'm not sure where our time, our shifts. And so, um, it's something that they wanted us to bring to you and it's something that I'm, um, uh, proposing tonight. Um, Mayor Bearbros and I, some of us have had conversations about it, but this is what we have been attempting and I'm bringing it to the board for a discussion. Um, I think that you ultimately, um, have the authority, this is our property, we have, um, we could entertain the easement or we could just ultimately do nothing. Uh, but this is something that, um, I was asked to present to the board for a discussion.
Thank you, Chance.
Can you just show where the building, where the building is on that?
The building.
Sorry, maintenance building.
Um, I don't think it shows where the maintenance building is. It's ultimately, I would say ultimately roughly right around the end of that gray hash area. So when we designed the roadway for us to put in the golf course, um, Lamarcus, you can probably point it out there, so.
You can vaguely see it, but so our maintenance building is right in front of it.
Yeah. So we had contemplated relocating and demolishing it anyway, but when we would do our own stuff. Um, the issue on the custom matters that they have a more aggressive timeline to start construction of theirs, but we didn't. to start construction of theirs, but we didn't want to actually tear down our maintenance building before we were ready to start using it. And so, like I said, ultimately, their proposal now is to ask us for a temporary construction easement, um, to go around that property so they can start construction, but when it's time to put that roadway in, ultimately, um, my re, my position to protect the town would be, you know, we'd be, uh, do a cost share for the construction of the roadway so we wouldn't have to pay for the whole thing. Uh, but I don't have the authority to execute that deal, that's something that would require work.
One of the, one of the keys that I see with this proposal, and there's several of them, one, we're not bound to do it at all. It's a request.
That's right.
We're not bound to do this at all. One of the biggest keys I see is, is the, uh, future of Golf Field. I think this proposal is way too premature because we don't know what the widening of Golf Field is gonna look like. We're gonna, because then you're looking at turn lanes to go into the golf course property, and we know from the original master plan back in nineteen, when I was on board, is that DOT only allowed several entrance, entrances into the golf course property. And I go give two or three, they're only gonna give a couple, and then that cost of the turn lanes is gonna be responsible for whoever's developing that golf course. There's a, also, uh, an acceleration, deceleration lane that needs to go in too. So let's say that we go ahead and do this, give permission for this easement. If we do that, that bounds us. That bounds us. Because then they get the easement, they start construction, it's on us at that point. They're gonna tear down our maintenance building, they're not gonna replace it, or maybe they wanna, uh, share some type of cost into it, but really, this is on DOT because if, if we allow this and we do something on Golf Field, and then two or three years from now, DOT says, no, we're gonna widen the whole thing, so we're gonna come in and tear out what you have paid for and widen Golf Field. How premature is that because we're allowing an easement to go through, uh, an apartment complex? Now, they have entrance, they have entrance into their, to their land on the fence.
That's right, I think Don was a winner of that entrance. They have enough width of right away to put in a roadway for their development now.
They can come right down the fence line on their own property.
That's correct.
To, to access.
And, and what they're doing with George, to give George that right of way and to purchase it, that's their deal with them, that has absolutely nothing to do with us. And so, that's one thing I wanted to highlight with this diagram here. Um, what they're doing is, they're proposing to give away their right of way so that George has to square off up to that fence line and they ask for easement from us. That's their deal, that's their project. We don't have any connection with them or George, and I think I see your concern when we talked earlier about if we grant the easement, we're almost bound or required to put the roadway in.
Yeah.
Because that's what they.
They're gonna hold us to that because of that easement that we're allowing.
Yes, that's correct. And so, uh, but like I said, that's ultimately something that I wanted to present to, uh, the board. They have been asking for, similar initial, um, uh, requests was to, uh, not pay for the maintenance of the building to be reconstructed. We said no, the hard no, then they asked for half, and it was still a hard no. And they asked us to, uh, possibly use a temporary storage facility that they were paid for, and that was another hard no, because we're not putting our maintenance equipment off-site into a temporary code storage building. And so, the maintenance request is for a temporary easement around the, the actual building, but what that does is, if we shift the focus with respect to the development of the golf course and looking at the senior center, we may not be in a position to put that portion of that roadway in anytime soon. Um, DOT, I think, uh, Don can, and I can, uh, confirm that DOT project for why the Golf Field is a DOT roadway project, and it's in that fan post DOT hopper now, it's a project they're trying to fully fund, we don't know what the construction schedule is.
And, and that's why, Peter, I requested you to reach flashes and you to reach out to, uh, Andrew Bartstel and have him come to one of our board meetings and update us on the new DOT construction project, roadway projects, and how it feels in Miami. There's, there's some things changed in the last year, you know, as far as projects go. And then what are they looking at for future projects? So it'd be a very, very good update for us to have directly from DOT, including all the roadway projects, especially Golf Field.
That's right. Um, I don't think that we can, um, with the short schedule for them to make on the twenty-second, but we are talking a little far. No, um, if you recall, he said his last request was for him to try and relearn it, but he withdrew that, so that's all still residential.
You know, that's.
Is this question, this question be for? This question could be for, for Marco or Don? Is that storage pill over there on a concrete slab? The concrete inside there, I don't recall.
Asphalt.
On an asphalt slab?
Yeah.
Inside? Okay, I've been in there before, but my brain don't work like that far.
It needs to be. Asphalt needs to be.
Okay, thank you.
And so, if I'm hearing it correctly, the, the pulse of the board is pretty much not to do with the.
I have to wait to see how they bring their cards.
I think the consensus, if what I'm hearing tonight from the board, I think the consensus is that we're not gonna take any action on this, on this discussion piece, and we're gonna look at, uh, completing Heritage Park Phase One by reallocating four hundred and some thousand dollars from the ARCA money that has been projected and approved for, for the golf course project, but it seems like we're going to pivot. And if that's the direction that we're going in, then that definitely doesn't include this proposal.
That is correct, and, um, it's, we're talking about the, uh, senior center, the reason why Marco brought that up is since he and Drew were talking about the budget amendment that would have to go on the actual board meeting agenda on the twenty-second. And so, like you said, it sounds like we're talking about pivoting for, um, we've been talking about, um, geo balancing things of that nature, um, that we would have to, you know, uh, advertise for a whole year with that, for things of that nature. And that's basically, um, an approach to replenish money back towards parks and, and it would have a street component as well, but as of right now, we're talking about the, uh, ARCA money, we're talking about Heritage Park, that's what it sounds like.
What it sounds like we're doing. Okay, I think we're to the end of the presentation. Now, before we go, there's a couple things. We heard tonight, we've heard a lot of requests from all the departments, there's a lot of money in all these forty-five slides that we're looking at that the department's wanting. One of the things that we're doing to get out in front of some of this is, of course, one of the things that I asked Chance to, when I first was elected mayor, was, was a grant lighting position, you know, he knows that conversation, and that triggered the, uh, research of the grant lighting opportunities to the lead and facilities that we had never used before until now. So when we talk about the grant lighting, well, that's what she is. That's what she is. We've got some excellent opportunities, uh, we had a phone call this morning with a couple commissioners, Dr. McFray was on it, Commissioner Frager was on it along with Chance. It's where we're starting that opportunities to look at the grants going forward. Now, we're not stopping that, are we, actually? What do you got to tell us?
So, um.
We're not stopping that.
Um, so we did want to, um, talk to the board about the administration engaging the legislative delegation, um, to meet on February nineteenth, um, before the regular scheduled board meeting. So what our plan is currently is to push that meeting up until, um, six o'clock, um, and then that meeting, that evening would just be for you guys to engage with the delegation, and there wouldn't be any regular visits, which is. No, the next. Yeah, so you already have award meeting schedules, um, that evening, so we figured it would be, um, easier since you're all available. Um, four out of the delegates have confirmed, um, and four are Senator Applewhite, Senator McKinley, Representative Jackson, and Representative Wheatley. Bill, what do you have to say more?
Rouser and, uh, Bud indicated, because the president said they probably wouldn't be able to make the meeting, but one thing I think is powerful that we talked about is, we just got the list back from Ingrid with the lead, and so, what we bring into that delegation meeting is these priorities that you guys have looked at and embedded with the list that we're getting from the lead grant program that the state created the program from, and then you're taking that to the delegation and say, hey, these other things that we prioritized from town, what can we do to move forward?
And we will invite the grant lady to come to our legislative meeting to be part of this. So we're doing something that's, that's phenomenal here in the first part of February, and that's right after our next, uh, budget meeting, where the board commissioners will present our priorities to the town staff, and that will be on February sixth, we're gonna do it at six P M. before the regular meeting. That's the next budget meeting that we're gonna have, so after that.
The February fifth.
February fifth. So after that, the legislative delegation comes in with the grant lady, and we start putting this together of how we're going to fund through, how we're gonna fund all these numerous projects that we're looking at, that all, that all have been tonight, have taken four, a little over four hours and fifteen minutes to share with us. So that's our plan. That's our plan going forward for at least the next couple months, and then this is gonna culminate on March seventh in this very room for the budget retreat. Now, we left out one, which wanna try to meet, we're gonna try to meet with the town and county commissioners as well, and I'm gonna leave them out of the opportunity to help us fund our projects. We're gonna give them the opportunity to help us do it. So we haven't had definitive data on when we're gonna do that, and how that's gonna be presented, but that's in the works.
I think the challenge with that is the, uh, Compton County, uh, work board meeting are at the same time as ours, but they do have work sessions, both the morning and the evening, so, uh, working through how we get our board, uh, together to do that, that's the challenge, so we are having that conversation.
Okay.
Um, also.
Last part of our agenda tonight was we had public comment section. Did anybody sign up, actually, for a public comments tonight? That's on the agenda, wanna make sure. And since we're live streaming, if any of the public that witnessed and listened to our four and, four hour and fifteen minute budget session tonight, if they would like to send in or share any comments they have about any priorities that were presented, we'd sure like to hear the input from the citizens as well.
I was just trying to say, when, uh, when we are meeting with our, um, delegation, they, I'm happy that we are doing something for ourselves because what has happened in the past, where we were trying to work, work them on the sales tax agreement, and when we have asked for money, they always ask, what are you doing for yourself? So, um, I think it's good that we are looking to, to grant, and, um, I think we know something we might have to do, um, take.
Use the T word.
Um, but that, that is something that, that, that was a lot of, there was a lot of pushback on that, when you constantly go to people asking for money, that you do, you don't, you're not really doing anything to proactively help yourself, so, um, that I do want to make sure that we keep that in mind. Thank you.
Anybody else before we adjourn? One, one last thing, Chance, you got anything? Anybody from the staff got anything before we adjourn?
Just wanna say thank you to the board, um, this is, uh, something that goes off, um, and I think I can speak for staff that, um, it, it is something very powerful for us to be included and for us to be heard and, uh, to know that we're actually doing this, like you said, together.
So Drew, you're not gonna do what you always do. We are going to do this together. But that's, I have a question to adjourn. Second.
I would buy everyone else's.
Alright.
Hello, uh, board, board members of the lake, real quick, and department heads, uh, I have an announcement. Stop my breath. Um, I have an announcement to board members and, uh, staff members. Um, as we're moving forward with the, uh, revamping of our website, we have secured a photographer to take headshots of everyone on January twenty-second at, to be determined, so we'll send that out. It'll be before the meeting, but headshots, so wear something, uh, nice to keep on the website. Headshot.